Thank you, everyone. Take a few minutes to thank the Public Works Crew, who came this afternoon as soon as we had access to the gym at 3 o'clock, shortly thereafter, 3:30, and set up all these chairs. I will also, as long as we're on the topic of these chairs, the Public Works Crew may not necessarily be here when we finish, since we don't know when that will be. So I will gladly ask for any volunteers that wish to help us strike the set and pile the chairs back on the pallets. Would really appreciate that help. Thank you. Okay. Be sure to get your annual town report. And I'd like to take a moment now to recognize that this report is dedicated to the names you'll find on page one. Four individuals. And I would ask that we take a moment of silence in recognition to the service to the town they loved. Thank you. Now, a little bit about the procedures. There's going to be more on this later as I get farther down. But at this point, I just wanted to mention that in addition to the stationary microphone at the center of the hall, we have two persons with movable microphones. I see Linda down here raising her microphone, and then Vicky's over on the other side. So I wish to have the majority of the comments made by the voters to be made from the center microphone stand. We will use the roving mics to answer questions as they come up that are posed to other members of the crew, of the members of the voters that didn't asked to be, to speak, but need to answer a question. But the majority of the testimony and evidence should be given from the center microphone. We'll talk more about that later. Please take a moment to silence your cellphones and pagers. And once you got that done, I will recognize Bill Helm.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Effective conduct of town affairs requires the efforts of over 100 volunteers on various boards and committees, and of more than, more than 100 ballot clerks who assist in elections and in town meetings. The names and roles of all of these individuals are listed on pages two, four, five, six, and seven of the annual report that Michael just referred to. To each of them, we extend our gratitude for their service. This year, we especially want to recognize two elected members of the Budget Committee who have chosen not to seek reelection. Mark Christiansen is completing two three-year terms for a total of six years. And John Wilson is winding up, believe it or not, five three-year terms for a total of 15 years. Thank you, Mark and John. So New London has a highly regarded team of department heads and employees. The important word in this statement is "team", and every high-performing team needs an effective coach, manager, or leader. For us, that person is our current Town Administrator, Kim Holquist. In this year's annual report, following page F36, so right in the middle there, the department heads and the selectmen wrote, and I quote, "During Kim's 14-year tenure, our town has seen significant progress and development. From overseeing critical infrastructure projects to enhancing town services and fostering strong community relationships, Kim has played a pivotal role in shaping the future of New London. Kim's collaborative approach and thoughtful decision-making have earned the respect and admiration of coworkers, residents, and community leaders alike." As I'm sure most of you know, Kim is going to retire effective June 30, 2025. Tonight, on the occasion of Kim's final town meeting, we ask that you join the selectmen in thanking Kim for her 14 years of strong team leadership and commitment to New London. Thank you, Kim.
At this time, I would like to resume the town meeting that we began yesterday at 7:00 a.m. at Whipple Hall to begin the voting. So the Chair would entertain a motion to resume the 247th Annual Town Meeting for the purposes of deliberating and resolving Articles 3 through 19 in the warrant. Do I have a second? Is there discussion? Takes a minute to look around the hall. Seeing none, all those in favor of continuing this meeting, please signify by raising your blue cards. Got to get those out, we'll need them. All those opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is officially called to order. And at this point, I will read the results of yesterday's ballot session at Whipple Hall. This requires a removal of my glasses. Okay. The race for selectmen. 1,036 ballots were cast. Richard Anderson, 496. Thomas Carley, 409. Cara Leone, 88. And there were three write-ins. And with the permission of the Assembly, I will waive the reading of the individual write-ins. Trustees of trust funds. Arts Scutto, Scutro, excuse me, 803. There were no other candidates. One write-in on that one, and a bunch of undervotes. Budget Committee. Louis Bauda, 786. Kim Ilg, 764. Cynthia Rusus, 715. Three new Budget Committee members. Cemetery Commissioner Charlie Hafter, 943 votes. I don't know how he does it. He and Marion get the most votes when they run unopposed. It's unbelievable, they get more than I do. All right, whatever. Okay. Library trustees. Patty Betchak, 861. Jerry Coogan, 804. Only four write-ins there, another uncontested race. Planning Board Proposal. Amendment number one. Yes, 772. No, 176. Amendment two. Yes, 880. No, 122. Amendment three. Yes, 854. No, 136. That concludes the results of the town ballot. School District Moderator Derek Lick, 893. Ran unopposed, only three write-ins. School Board. James McKenna, 488. Elizabeth Parish Gunby, 444. Three write-ins. Municipal Budget Committee. Winifred ran unopposed, received 854 votes. Question one. A, 688. B, 253. My recollection is the numbers for those choices were exactly the same. In any event, it passed. Question two. Yes, 856. No, 141. Question three. Yes, 883. No, 112. Question four. Yes, 889. No, 105. So all those questions carried. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to tell you that this, this voting tally came from our new Voting Works scanning ballot counting devices, which we tried this year for the very first time. And we also piloted a high-speed scanner for use in the processing of absentee ballots. This was a pilot trial that was supervised by the Secretary of State's office. Representatives were here. It went without a hitch. And I can tell you that the reconciliation between the number of people who checked in and the number of ballots that got checked out was exactly the same. I think it was worth it. Okay. Okay. Excuse me. This meeting is a legislative proceeding. It is not an assembly. There are limitations on First Amendment speech rights. This is the meeting when we conduct the business of the town as set forth in the amendments, signed and delivered to you by the selectmen. If you wish to be heard on any article when it's called, come down and queue up at the center microphone. State your name when recognized. And I think we're going to have an article with numerous speakers. So just make a queue at the microphone, and you may identify yourself when you get to the microphone. Now, I didn't, I will do this right now. We'll do this right now. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the rules which are located in this town report, this town moderator rules that are after my report. And the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt those rules and utilize them for this meeting. Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there discussion? I can't tell you right off the top of my head which page those rules are on, but they're in the annual report. Seeing no discussion, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of adopting the rules, signify by saying "aye" or raising your hand, raising your blue cards. That's how we vote. We don't "aye". Yes. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are adopted. Now, we're going to get to the very nasty, nitty, nitty-bitty question here. We have an article coming up that we're going to deal with first, which I think is going to have a great deal of discussion. And we do not have a standing rule limiting the time speakers may hold the floor once recognized. But this is your meeting. So if you want to adopt a time limit, you may do so. If we do not have a time limit, and we do not impose one, it could be a very long evening. But the choice is yours. This is your meeting. I'm just here to help you run it. The Chair recognizes Charlie Giles. There is a motion. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion on the floor to limit debate to two minutes. And it's seconded. Per person. You get the microphone. You have two minutes to make your statement heard to the general public. Is there discussion? Now we're going to kick it around. Now if you, now's the time for discussion. Joe Cardillo, Chair recognizes Joe Cardillo. Yeah, in this instance, I'm happy to have Linda bring you the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Two minutes would likely be sufficient time. I recall here last year, we went through the same exercise. I'm opposed to the two minutes. I would propose an amendment, if that's in order at this point in time.
It is.
To amend it to three minutes for the simple reason that I believe there are many among us who prepared certain statements and discussion, and likely used last year's three-minute rule that we had as a benchmark. So I'd approve, I, my motion is to amend this to three minutes and no longer. Do we have a second?
So now we have an amendment on the floor, which is amending the two minutes Charlie proposed to three minutes. And we have a second. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Did I see a hand over here? All right, well, we have an agreement. Okay. Is there further discussion? Anyone wish to, so the number we're going to do is we're going to amend the initial motion by Charlie from two to three minutes. Further discussion? Not? Okay, so I'll, if somebody? Thank you. I can't, I, I thank you very much. I appreciate it. Please wait, identify yourself. I can't re-recognize you. I'm sorry. If I don't recognize you, it's not personal. I just can't see well.
Thea Lottie here, New London resident. I suggest an amendment for one minute. Since we began this conversation at this point, it has now been one minute since the gentleman over there suggested we amend it to three minutes. We are now in total time, 1 minute 20 seconds. And that's quite a long time. Thank you.
Understood.
So I suggest one-minute amendment.
Procedurally speaking, we have to vote down a three-minute amendment first before we can entertain the one-minute amendment. So, at this point, I says, "No further discussion." Thank you, Thea. Then if there's no further discussion, are you ready to vote on the amendment to go from two to three minutes? All right. All those in favor of amending the initial motion to go from two minutes to three minutes, signify by saying, "I'm raising your blue cards"? Good. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The amendment carries. So now, we get to vote on the amendment itself. So now, if Thea is determined to put the one minute in front of you, she may do so by attempting to amend this article from two minutes to one minute. I'm sorry, from three minutes to one minute. Thank you very much. All right, I'm not seeing any amendments on that. Are you ready for the question on the amended motion to limit the time to three minutes? Oh, no, 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 no. Whoa, 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 no. Unless I'm mistaken, Charlie proposed two. We voted to amend it to three. Now the amendment, now what's before us on the floor is to limit speakers to three minutes? I didn't hear the, she didn't stand up and make an amendment to go to one minute. If you want to do so, you may. Okay, got it. Chair recognizes Thea.
One minute.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend from three to one. Do I have a second? We have a second. Is there further discussion on going from three to one? I'm not seeing any. All right, you ready for the question on going from three to one? All those in favor of limiting debate to one minute, signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The Chair is in doubt. I'm not afraid to say that. So, at this point, do we have eight ballot clerks available? No, no, we're not going to do a paper ballot. Where is, Casey's probably checking in people at the other end of the room, at the other end of the... We have divided the hall, just so you know, into eight floor sections. You can see the pattern of the chairs. And the bleachers have been divided into three sections. So we need a total of 11 ballot clerks each to count the cards held aloft in each of the available sections to get a more accurate count. Obviously, in order to pull this off, I have to find 11 ballot clerks. Some of them may be down in the library checking in voters. I don't know if they're through there yet or not. Fortunately, we have to wait. We're kind of stuck. While we're waiting for that, though, and we have this motion on the floor, I'm going to invite Selectman Kidder here to make a speech briefly. And then we will, once we have sufficient ballot clerks, we will vote on this amendment to limit debate. All right? So Chair recognizes Selectman Kidder.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Everyone who moves to New London leaves their mark, shaping our community in unique ways. If we are fortunate, that change makes our town an even better place to live. Bill Helm has done just that, working tirelessly, tirelessly to enrich New London with his dedication, wisdom, and collaborative spirit. His calm and thoughtful approach to every issue has earned him the deep respect of his colleagues and the gratitude of the community. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work alongside you, Bill. Bibi and I thank you for your unwavering commitment and all you have done for New London.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, now we're going to resume the ballot, the issue at hand here, which is a vote on the motion to limit debate to one minute. Now, I need, I need my ballot clerks that have been assigned specific sections to raise your hand so I can see you. Are you guys all ready? Does everybody have a section?
No.
All right.
We have, still, our volunteers are still in the library. Can you give us three minutes?
Well, what else can I do? Yeah, I'm afraid we, yeah, I didn't anticipate this. Honest, we both believe that the hall was fairly evenly divided on this issue, and I want an accurate count before we move forward. I wish there was something we could jump to. Yeah, well, we have some other administrative things I can go through. So let me go through some other administrative stuff. So ballot clerks, please bear with me for a minute. Casey's going to resume. There's still people arriving. There's still checking people in at the library. They have to move those books down here because those people are voters. They want to hear what's going on. So when they are in the process of doing that, in a few minutes, we will have sufficient clerks to count each of the eight sections and the three sections on the bleachers. And we can get an accurate account on the question of the one-minute limitation of debate time. In the meantime, let me just mention a few things If a speaker makes a point, and the subsequent speaker agrees with it but has nothing further to add, like this gentleman over here just said, "I agree with the speaker so-and-so", we don't need to hear the same argument multiple times. We have, okay. With respect to Article III, which is the one that's going to have most of the debate, I've compiled, I've compiled a list of those who wish to be heard on the article from email, phone, and people running me down the street. And you've got to understand, I'm not going to call their names and ask them to come and speak. When we get ready to do Article III, I'm going to call and say, "Anyone wishing to be heard on Article III", and yeah, I've got a little list here, and I'll make sure they get in the line. They're all going to stand up at the microphone in the center of the hall and make a line. Everybody that wants to be heard on Article III, stand up at the microphone, and you will be, you will be, have the ability to speak sereatum following the presentation on this article by the selectmen. They are entitled to speak first because they wrote the article, and they presented it to you. They're the proponents. They have the right to speak, address it first. No motion to limit debate will be entertained until such time as everyone in the line has had the opportunity to speak once. Then, if we wish to limit debate further, that motion will be entertained, and you'll have the opportunity to vote on it. I could tell you, in the 10 years I've been doing this, this is the year that I've received more friendly advice than I can ever remember. And that's a good thing because it shows people are getting involved. People are taking part, and that's great. So if we can just try to abide by these rules I've set forth, I think we'll have a very pleasant evening and a lot of robust debate. And that's what this is all about, is getting answers to questions that we want so we can vote intelligently. Now, show of ballot clerks. We have enough to count the entire hall. We have, the bleachers been delineated. I don't see anyone down here counting this first section. Are you guys all set? All set? All right. Are you all ready for the question? All those in favor of limiting debate to one minute, please raise your blue cards and hold them aloft until I ask you to put them down. The ballot clerks now will count the blue cards aloft Okay, I need some kind of a signal from the ballot clerks when they, are you guys all, oh, they see all the, everybody ready, everybody done? Everyone's done? Yes? One more to go. Hold them up aloft, please. Just a few more minutes, a few more seconds, whatever it takes. Are we a set? We are set. Okay, you can put your cards down. Now, all those opposed to limiting debate to one minute, please raise your blue cards and hold them aloft until I ask you to put them down. Oh, well, Conrad, can you please count the votes on the stage, please? In your total. Thank you, Bill. I tend to forget that selectmen, like us, all have a vote. I'm trying to stay out of this. Casey, are we ready? Are we done? Done. Please summarize the results, deliver them to the Chair, and we will tell you what the result of the vote was. Thank you for your patience. I want to get it right, if it's possible to do so. Now, let's just make a comment about these. You were given little slips of paper when you checked in, along with your blue card. These are called our paper secret ballots. When we call for a paper ballot vote, we will tell you which color of the ballot to use. In the event that you can't determine, distinguish the colors, there's a letter in the upper right-hand corner to further help you distinguish these ballots. When I ask you to use one, you remove the entire ballot, circle your choice, yes or no. And there was pens provided. You can borrow them from your neighbor, and hopefully you brought a writing instrument from home. You will circle your choice. And in the event it's not a bond issue, you can stay seated. We will pass a shoebox back and forth to collect them. In the case of the bond issue, you will mark your ballot in the same way, and you will bring it with you. And you may put it into one of three ballot boxes. There's one here. There's one there. And there's one in the back corner. And the ballot boxes will be open for one hour. And during that hour, you're free to leave your seat and put your correct ballot of the correct letter or color into the ballot box. Ballots of any other color placed in the box will not be counted. Torn ballots will not be counted. Mark the ballot, fold it in half or leave it whole. I need the whole ballot placed into the box. And at the end of the hour, our ballot clerks will collect them and count, and we will then determine the result of the vote. The bond issue, in order to prevail, must pass by a three-fifths majority. That is a, that is a, an amendment from the statute. It used to be two-thirds. Now they moved it to three-fifths. Now, if on the bond issue you are unable to leave your chair for various, any reason, and you wish to have one of our ballot clerks move the, cast the ballot for you, just raise your blue card, and our ballot clerks will wait on you, and you can put the ballot in a shoebox, and they'll get it into the ballot box. You have to bring your own ballots. This is a participatory democracy. You can't bring your neighbor's ballot. You've got to bring ballot, one person, one ballot in the ballot box, and you can't go through the line twice. Kind of destroys our numerical control. And while I'm waiting for them to tally these ballots, there's one more thing that I will mention, which I think might be important for, particularly for the results of Article III, since it's a bond issue. And a contentious one at that. There is an RSA 4010, which is optional restriction on reconsideration. So you guys, the Assembly, may, on your own motion, after the vote is taken and announced on the bond issue, someone, anyone, may get up and say, "Mr. Moderator, I move that we restrict reconsideration of Article III", and we then put it to a vote. Now, if the motion is adopted, what it means is, the vote may be reconsidered later, but not sooner than seven days later. And this all happened because one town voted on an article, and after the majority got the result they wanted, a bunch of them went home. And later in the evening, the opposition brought it up again and defeated it. And the proponents went to court. And the court directed, and the legislature responded with this article. So this is intended, intended to prevent a reversal when all of the parties are not here. It's intended to be fair. It's intended to create fairness. So we may entertain a motion for that. We have a result. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, restricting debate to one minute, yes, two-twenty-three, no, two-forty-four? The amendment fails. So now we're back to the previous amendment of three minutes. Are you ready for the question on the original amended motion to have to limit debate to three minutes? All right. All those in favor of limiting debate to three minutes signify by raising your blue All those opposed? The chair is not in doubt. Debate is hereby limited to three minutes. It will be tracked by the town clerk, and when you have 30 seconds left, he's going to give you a sign. And when you're out of time, he's going to give you both. I don't know how else to do this, but that's the fairest way I could come up with. Okay, we are also required to, the clerk is required to make a note of who made the motions and who seconded them. And so if we're not sure, if the chair isn't sure, and quite frankly, I can't see much past the 10th row, so anybody that can assist us with that, and that goes to the selectmen as well, those with better eyesight than mine, could help us out. That'd be great. And of course, you can always identify yourself before you give it, before you speak. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the text of each article and simply refer to them by number. Do I have a second? All, is there discussion? Only reason we do that is to, to limit, to make more efficient use of our time, since the printed warrant articles are before you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor of waiving the reading of the articles and referring to them by number, raise your cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it. We will do that. Okay, we got that. Article Three, what's your pleasure? Got to move it, got to get it on the floor. Been moved by selectman Helm. Do I have a second? You get one. Pick one. Well, there's several. All right. At this time, as I mentioned before, the chair will recognize Janet Kidder and Bebe, followed by Bebe Hammond, to make remarks in support of this article. And I will say right now, I'm going to invite everyone, including those 12 and 13, 12, was it, 12 or 13? Eleven, 12, 12. Who wish to be heard on this article and indicated to me that they did wish to be heard, to move to the center microphone at this time. And if I don't see anybody there, I will entertain a motion to limit, to stop further debate. So if you guys want to make your way to the microphone, you'll be called upon as soon as our selectmen have finished their initial presentations. Now, the one person that is, that I'm going to say is exempt from the requirement of moving down there is my town clerk, who wishes to be heard on this article. So with, with, with your leave, with your permission, I will allow him to speak from here rather than going down on the floor and addressing you from there. And who knows, as the line is, is quite substantial, when those folks have finished, he may wish, may or may not wish to speak, but he's willing to wait until the end to, to determine that. Thank you for your compliance. At this time, which of you is going first?
I am.
Janet. Okay, chair recognizes Janet.
First, I want to recognize and thank the current Police Facilities Committee and the former Building and Facilities Committee for their dedication and hours of work on the challenge of how the town will provide a police facility that meets the needs of our police and communications men and women. Some may be surprised that I am thanking the former Building and Facilities Committee as I have been open about my disagreement with their methods of working on this project. However, I do respect their willingness and the willingness of all our volunteer board members to put their time and expertise to solving the issues facing the town. I hope that we can all come together tonight to take the next step towards solving the decades-long question of how we will support our police department. We have before us an article that will allow the town to purchase four acres on Siemens Road, just six-tenths of a mile from the existing station, for a future site for our police department. A new police station will undoubtedly be an expensive undertaking. The town also faces several important and potentially costly projects in its future, and it is reasonable to expect that there will always be significant initiatives requiring careful planning. However, delaying the construction of the new police station, essentially kicking the can down the road, comes with its own price. Not only will the project become more expensive over time, but there's also the risk that the patience of the men and women in our police department may wear thin. They may ultimately conclude that the town is not committed to providing them with the tools they need to deliver the high level of police protection residents have come to rely on. While there is hope that a request for funds to build a new police station can be brought to town meeting in 2026, this depends on several factors. Reaching an agreement on the building design and navigating next year's economic conditions may require delaying the request until a later date. However, securing ownership of the property now will resolve a critical piece of the puzzle, allowing planning for the building continue until it is prudent to move forward. Some residents remain focused on the idea of keeping the police station on the Bukeur building site. The issue of purchasing the adjacent property owned by Mary Ann McEnroe was first discussed by the selectmen in 2018. Consultants hired by the board to study the issue provided us with a potential site plan. What's that?
Sorry, Janet, I forgot to ask you if you'd read that before and timed yourself, but everyone's limited to...
It's five minutes at least, so forget that. I mean, I'm going to keep going, Michael.
She wants to keep going. It's your meeting. You say, you tell. What do you want to do? It's their meeting.
Seriously?
They voted on three.
It doesn't exempt the selectmen?
I did. Bebe, three minutes.
I'm going to go really fast. We've considered the debt limit policy set by the town in 2021, and we understand that we face several future projects requiring funding. Some of these projects include water capacity, school funding changes, building maintenance. We are currently working on a database of our maintenance needs and fire station expansion. Regarding our current financial station, situation, we continue to pay off and retire existing debt. New London remains an attractive place for investment and residence, resulting in a strong expanding tax base that helps stabilize increases in the tax rate. What we've heard from you, we understand that you want to know the cost of this project as well as the cost of either renovating Bukeur or demolishing it to build a new station on the same site. The PFAC committee has studied these options and has been holding information sessions. Option one, Siemens Road property. To adhere to the debt limit guidance adopted in 2021, we have set a $10.4 million budget for the new police station, including the $955,000 being considered tonight. Recent estimates from Colliers and La Valley Brenzinger exceed that amount, with La Valley Brenzinger estimated $14.8 million for the Siemens Road property. We are confident we can reduce this figure to 10.4 during Phase Two. A 2020 study done at the request of the Building and Facilities Committee estimated the cost of renovating Bukeur at 3.3 million. The proposal was for Band-Aid work in the Bukeur building, not filling all the needs of the police department now or in the future. Adjusted for inflation, that would cost approximately 4.00 million, 4 million today. New construction, again, a study done?
You're fine. You're fine. It's just the folks in the back are having a little trouble hearing. So if you want to eat the thing, that would work.
New construction on the Bukeur site. The neighboring property is currently assessed at 435.9. A previous study done by the selectmen gave multiple options. The option to purchase the property next door and build a new structure was previously estimated at 8.9 million. Adjusted for today's inflation, that would cost approximately 12.2, and that doesn't include the property acquisition, demolition, relocation of the department during construction costs. That does not change the fact that the site will still have traffic issues, need a perimeter fence, will still need a large tower, and the police have voiced their concerns about the site in general. If Article Three is approved, we'll conduct necessary testing to determine the site's viability. How much time do I have left? Because I want to make an important point.
Forty-seven seconds.
Forty-seven seconds. I want to make the point that if we, we're not purchasing the property until we have done the necessary due diligence and some initial site work to make sure that the site is viable, that's a question that I have heard a lot of. I want to finish by saying that the last time I was on this stage was in 1977, when I was in the fifth grade and reciting the Gettysburg Address to a crowd a bit smaller than this one, though some of you might have been there. While the Gettysburg Address holds unparalleled historical importance in shaping national identity, building a new police station addresses immediate tangible needs to ensure community safety and functionality. Both represent responses to critical challenges of their respective eras.
Thank you. Okay, I see Ashley at the microphone.
Yeah, is it on?
It is on, Ashley.
All right. My name is Ashley Sebold. Moderator Todd, member of the Select Board, I hear you. Town leadership and fellow residents of New London, I stand here tonight as a New London native, a relatively decent human, and the Chair of the Police Facilities Advisory Committee. A year ago tonight, the town voted against warrant Article Four, which would have kept the police station at its current location and prevented further exploration of alternative sites. The Select Board heard you and in response formed this committee. We have spent the better part of the last year thoroughly evaluating potential options for the police department. We had four possible solutions: remodeling the existing space in Bukeur, demolishing Bukeur and rebuilding on the same footprint, purchasing and converting another building to turn it into the police station, acquiring land to construct a new police station from the ground up. To ensure a well-informed and data-driven recommendation, we partnered with Colliers project leaders and La Valley Brenzinger architects. Chief Cobb conducted an in-depth needs assessment with these experts, which guided our decision-making process. Our recommendation is to purchase the land on Siemens Road, a short distance from the current location, for a new police station. Tonight, we ask you to approve the $955,000 for us to be able to move forward to the next phase of the project. The breakdown of the $955,000 is as followed. $350,000 for agreed-upon price to purchase the land on Siemens Road, following due diligence, including a title search and review of contingencies in the purchase and sale agreement. $40,000 for the closing costs and subdivision work, $125,000 for boring excavating and clear-cutting site work, $430,000 for design work towards the final design and cost estimating, $10,000 for contingency. The preliminary estimate from our partners, as mentioned, was 14 million, which encompasses all the bells and whistles. However, Phase Two of this project will redefine the design, reassess needs versus wants, and optimize space planning and materials to reduce the cost to the $10.4 million budget cap. Here is the impact on taxes. For the initial $955,000 that we are requesting tonight, a homeowner with a property assessed at $500,000 would pay approximately $18.50 in the first year, for the full year, not per tax period, per billing period, decreased to $7.35 by year 30. For a full $10.4 million bond, the same homeowner would pay $194.17 annually in the first year, decreased to $84.55 by year 30. Don't do this to me, Will! Really important regarding external figures and estimates that you've seen circulating from outside, we cannot verify their accuracy, and they are not part of this committee's vetted research. We remain committed to providing taxpayers with transparent and accurate financial updates through Phase Two. If this does not pass, we will be back every single year until it, something does pass, and then we are going to get into a situation where we have big financial projects compounding at the same time. So please, vote yes on three.
You must identify yourself, sorry. But yes, you may proceed, three minutes.
I was waiting to be acknowledged.
You are acknowledged.
Doug Baxter.
Thank you, Doug. Sorry, I can't, I can't.
Oh, sorry. I don't have much to say, so I'll be very slow. This has been a very divisive issue for our town. And regardless of the outcome, we as a community need to show the women and men of our excellent police department a vote of confidence. Please join me in giving them a round of applause to show our support and appreciation.
Thank you, Doug. Please identify yourself and proceed, three minutes.
Andy Beck. I've also been a member of the Police Facilities Advisory Committee. I'm asking you all to please vote yes on this warrant article so that we can stop kicking this very old dented can, as Bebe has, down the road. Our wonderful police and communications departments have been working in unsuitable conditions for too long. Their days and nights are long and often very stressful, and they deserve to have a better space. Their needs are not typical of a standard office space. So while you may think that our current station is fine, in reality, it is far from it. Law enforcement has changed significantly over the years while our station has not. The lack of respect for our current chief, as well as her predecessor, by not listening to what is really needed is disheartening. I keep hearing people say that they support the police, but they just don't feel like they need a new station. Would you be okay working in a building that you don't feel safe in, or that you can't use the locker rooms because of the sewage on the floor? I commend our department for not only the excellent work that they do, but for also their willingness to show up when their needs keep getting overlooked and voted down by some citizens. I don't know about you, but if I were an officer diving by all these bright red signs that say "vote no" while on patrol, I wouldn't feel appreciated. I'd like to highlight a few recent notable events. An officer stopped a car theft in progress on King Hill Road because they were on patrol late at night and observant. An officer was first on scene of a fiery vehicle crash and was able to save life by pulling someone out of the car. A dispatcher stayed on the phone and helped people down off of Mount Kearsarge who took the wrong trail to the bottom and ended up miles from their car. The dispatcher talked them through. The incident was able to secure a ride for them to their car. New London Police Department has a consistent presence at the elementary school, being present most days at school drop-off or pickup to encourage collaboration and foster relationships with students, parents, and staff. They also collaborate effectively with town departments and citizens to provide a safe, enjoyable, trick-or-treating experience for New London residents. The Facilities Committee was put together to work collaboratively to come up with a solution. We have worked very hard over the last year to present to you a pathway forward. Let's show our police force that we are finally going to listen to their needs and build a suitable building in a better location, which is what they want. Thank you.
Next is...
Carolyn Lockhart.
Thank you, Carolyn. Three minutes.
I have been a resident of New London for 31 years, and I, we moved to this town after the Navy shuttled us around the world for 32, and we decided to make this place home. And I've always thought that the town of New London was well-managed and well-run. The, and the police department has been absolutely wonderful to four generations of my family with, you know, medical emergencies, a break-in, a carbon monoxide leak, and a friendly stop on County Road one morning when I was too much in a hurry to get to work at the hospital. Every, every interaction has been handled with care, respect, and complete professionalism and courtesy, and I think we are very fortunate to have them. We're also, I also would like to echo appreciation to the committee who did all this yeoman's work to put all the reports together. So I will not repeat that. But you, you don't even have to go inside the current building to realize that it is well past its shelf life. The, it's, the lot is too small, the security, you know, there's difficult, there is no big security for the building. Access, parking is terrible. The, the accessibility for somebody with mobility issues is almost, is very difficult. This town, and to my knowledge, has never turned down a major request by Highway Department, Fire Department, any of the other departments. And yet, when it comes to the police department, I don't know why we don't accept their recommendations and their studies. I don't know why we don't accept their recommendations and their studies. Those who use that building 24/7 are the best ones to judge best practices for security and equipment and for communications, and I think we should trust the professionals. I don't think we should presume to know better than they do. Some against the new facility claim the current location is close to both the elementary school and the college. Others say it's quaint and fits the small-town image, inferring that we, because we live in a safe area, we don't need sophisticated security. But the unthinkable can happen anywhere. Many of you in this room will remember November 1st, 1993, when a man with issues with the town walked into Newbury Town Hall with two assault rifles and a .22, fired, killed, fired at the three female workers, killing two of them, one of them a New London resident and a neighbor, and then shot himself.
Time.
Dying later that night. I don't think we should, the impossible, the unthinkable can happen here, and the police station in Newbury is 50 yards from the town hall. Thank you. I hope you'll join me on voting yes on Article Three.
My name is Philip Sherman. My wife and I live in Elkins. We raised our two children. For those who don't know me, I was the Chair of the Myers Study Committee that looked at what would fit in the Bukeur Building. I was also the Chair of the committee that renovated Whipple, which involved work in some of the PD spaces, and currently, I'm a member of the Police Facility Advisory Committee. I want to address the proponents' conclusion that the renovation of Bukeur Building is impractical. In 2018, the Harriman Study Architects resulted in five options involving the existing site. In 2020, the Myers Study completed the analysis. The Myers conclusions were based on a space-by-space and a function-by-function needs analysis provided by the NLPD. The constant repetition that the problems with Bukeur were not solved by the Myers Study is at best misdirection, as the study resolved major issues and provided possible solutions to the others. Both the previous and the current studies inflated the space needs identified by the police department by about 30%, and then stated things wouldn't fit. But let's say the taxpayers wish to provide what the PD desires over and above the self-identified needs. The Harriman options provided a starting point at a fraction of the cost being proposed. None of these options were addressed by the current committee. But there's more. The taxpayers should consider the moral hazard of an empty Bukeur Building. Although the selectmen have discussed renovating Bukeur and using it for everything from a daycare center to a recycling center to office space, they more recently have raised the possibility of simply tearing it down. Voters need to know what will be done. If it is to be torn down, this leads even more to the conclusion that a new station should be on the current site with a significant, significant, significant associated savings in providing what I and so many others have advocated: taking care of our police department's real needs. I encourage you to vote against this article in the hope that a future proposal addresses all upcoming taxpayers' financial demands and utilizes the current site. Thank you, and I beat the flag.
Hi, I'm John Wilson. I've lived here 53 years. If Article Three fails to pass, there is a lower-cost alternative plan that could well garner stronger voter support. The Select Board has determined that the demolition of the Bukeur Building is the best way forward. The alternative plan is Harriman Option Six, done for the town by Harriman Architecture, which allows for a new detached 13,000-square-foot police station at the present site, with 15 to 17 secure parking places and a far less adventurous access to Siemens Road than presently. The plan requires that the acquisition of the, the plan requires the acquisition of the adjacent property. The owner has been advised of the town's possible interest in her property and has said, and I paraphrase, that while she has no interest in selling the property, if the town feels that owning her property is needed for the police department, she would be willing to negotiate an agreement to sell her property to the town. Some of the advantages of Harriman Option Six are that it retains a popular location for proposed station, all utilities are readily available, and it has a commanding position for communications. There are few, there are few unknowns about the property. The Garvey property, however, is undeveloped and would require significant investment in site preparation and getting utilities to the site. Examples of this are an estimated $600,000 to furnish the site with water precinct water. Sewage would require a similar ditch and would be an uphill climb requiring a pump station. Under Option Six, a new police station could be constructed at the present site for an estimated $2.5 to $3 million, less than a similar facility at the Garvey site. The savings could be directed to either a reduction in total project cost or to further enhancement of the new station. This proposal would lead to the quickest and overall most mutually satisfactory solution. An added benefit would be a substantial restoration of Whipple Hall's historic appearance. Thank you.
Art Scutaro, I've lived here six years. John just took my second point, so I'll just stick with my first.
Thank you.
The Garvey property is not the proper location for a police station. The side road, out-of-way wooded location is not at our community's core center, that being the town green, town hall, Whipple, and the Kearsarge Development Center. The price tag of $10.4 million. For that, we should have a highly visible, more centrally-located community asset comparable to our other fine facilities, much like that portrayed by the neighboring Newbury Police Station for its community. Thank you.
Kathy Weber. I would just like to say that I think Whipple Hall is part of the heart of this community along with the library, and right now, there is not adequate access or parking. By moving the police station down Siemens Road, which I live off of, will create an opportunity to really be able to better use our community of Whipple Hall for gatherings. And I also think that we have an opportunity here to get this property at an incredibly reasonable price. That opportunity will likely not exist in the future, given the current real estate market. There are no other lots for sale in proximity, because I live in that area, three of them just sold this past year. So I think we have a chance here to do the most cost-effective thing and move forward on this project by voting yes now.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Epstein. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. Move up just a little. Hello, my name is Karen Epstein. Good evening. Tonight, I speak from the heart. I come from a family that has proudly served in law enforcement for generations: my father, uncle, brother, and now two nephews. Police work is in our blood. During our family Thanksgiving gatherings, while many families might debate politics or football, our discussions revolve around police work. In fact, this particular topic has come up. I speak to you tonight because sadly, Article Three, if passed, would place our police station in a bad location, off the main road and set back in the woods. This isolation would cut them off from the very people they serve, which is not healthy for us, our police officers, or the spirit of community policing. What we heard tonight from John Wilson is a game changer. He presented us with an opportunity to keep our police force in a more central location on higher ground in town, connected to the ebb and flow of our community. While we still can, now is the time to pause and ensure we make the right decision on a critical matter with such long-term implications. A no vote tonight is a yes for a better future for the citizens and police officers of New London. Please vote no on Article Three. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Hollinger.
Jeff, you could just bend that thing so you don't have to crouch to speak into it. It moves up and down. You'll be much more comfortable and it'll sound much better. Just take a second to adjust the thing. There you go. Thank you, Jeff.
I appreciate that. I have been a resident of New London for the past 40 years. I've also been a member of the Police Facilities Advisory Committee for the past 12 months. During the past year, I've worked with and listened to both sides regarding the need for a new police station. After careful review, I can say I am in favor of voting yes for Article Three for the following reasons. One, every study indicates the current building is too small, inadequate, does not meet ADA or current law enforcement standards. Two, the current plan limits the total maximum cost of the project at $10.4 million. By setting and agreeing to this number, the police chief, architects, project managers, selectmen, and police advisory committee have all agreed to compromise and work to meet or beat the $10.4 million price tag. Three, over the past four years, when we could have built a new police station, the price for commercial construction has gone up over 30%. If New London continues to delay, we will be back here in the future looking at a much more expensive project. Thank you.
Thank you, John Ellis. In recent articles in the Inntertown Record, there have been several concerns about the cost of upcoming projects that Bebe had mentioned earlier, including the possible new police station and the location in New London, and their multimillion-dollar costs associated with those projects. One of those projects that will be competing for our tax dollars and with the police station is the need for water in the town of New London, both for growth and expansion. You and we all know that there have been two project proposals that have been halted or stopped because of the limitations for the amount of water that is necessary for these projects. One, the Continuum Project, back below the New London Hospital for the Associated Living and Retirement Complex and Twin Pines Affordable Housing behind Hanaford. The current six wells at Kobe Point, at Little Lake Sunapee, have a life expectancy of 30 years. They came online in 1995. This year is the 30th year for those wells. Why has this issue not been addressed to date? When can we anticipate a discussion to solve this problem since we're at the 30-year mark? Funding and for the need for this increased water capacity will affect our taxes.
John, excuse me, but the subject matter of Article Three concerns the police station and the purchase of land on Siemens Road.
Yep.
It does not mention specifically anything about the water system precinct, which, by the way, does not affect the entire town, but mostly affects those people in the precinct, which, for those of you who may not know, covers a small portion of the center of town. So I think it would be in the best interest to confine your remarks to whether or not you're for or against Article Three.
I'm getting to that, Michael.
Okay.
I'm getting to that, but also, it was alluded to earlier by two individuals that have spoken, the fact that we have to get water to the existing, or the new, police location, and there is a cost of that that has not been discussed either. You've got to have water to get it there, and so there's a limit. So I have one more minute. May I finish?
You may.
Thank you. In a few months, in May or June, the professional engineering water study will be presented to us. This may suggest looking for an alternative or the possibility of drilling a seventh well at either Messer or Clark Pond. New London Springfield Water Precinct has already approached the selectmen and acknowledged that the town will be asked to participate in solving this issue financially. We will need to collaborate, and this will affect our town budget and taxes. This is just one and probably one of the biggest issues facing the town. Vote no on Article Three so that we have the resources to handle this big issue and protect our property values. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Rich Epstein. Everyone I have talked to wants the police department to have an updated police station. The barrier to progress, what has been kicking down the road, has been the lack of a proposal that gives residents confidence. All options have been considered. The residents in this town have a right to be sure that the bond they will be paying for for the next 30 years is spent on the best option possible, especially since the town portion of our property tax recently went up by 15.4% when inflation was only 3%. Meanwhile, Article Three proposes the most expensive location considered to date. The removal of the current location from the scope of the project has been what has created the barrier to progress. Also, removing dispatch from the scope left out the most costly portion of the station. All the selectmen stated this would be different than the proposal in 2023 for the land on Newport Road that was voted down by 78%. The difference, they claimed, was that this time, the project would produce detailed plans. We haven't come close to any detailed plans for a police station for $10.4 million. How can we go down this expensive path when we have so many unknowns and other large expenses pending? These include a major fire station renovation, a new roof for the library, new roofs for every school, the long-awaited new sidewalks, and potentially, the most costly of all is a new water source, which could be more than $20 million. And the water precinct can't fund, they said they're going to need to go to the town for this. We will know more about the water situation in just a few months, and keep in mind, we have an ever-decreasing amount of water from our current water source. Do London residents deserve a proposal that has equally considered all options, which will then break down the barriers for a new police station that is desperately needed? Thank you.
Colin Beasley. I agree with those who advocate it is time for the town to move forward and start investing in itself. However, I believe any decision of this magnitude should not be made in isolation, but in the broader context of the total demands facing the community. Our budget has grown 58% over the last decade, outpacing the inflation rate of 33% over the same period. There exists a number of future investments requiring the community's attention, and you've heard about them: the Fire Department, the water, DPW transfer stations, stump-dump needs, deferred maintenance, the list goes on and on. Put all those in the context of this article, which is a part of a multi-year project whose total cost, including interest, could climb up to $22-plus million. The rest of the town staff equally deserves safe and secure facilities. They are equally important and deserve the attention and resources of the community as well. We need to clearly understand what is a need and what is a want, so we can treat all the organizations fairly and position the town on a path that reasonably manages the tax consequences. consequences. Now for the broader context of our total taxes, which should also inform our discussion. The education portion of the tax bill has some likelihood of being influenced by a pending lawsuit and has a definite likelihood of being influenced by the building issues being documented by the school department. Regarding actions taken by the state and federal government, we have been cautioned by our state representative that Governor Iart's assumptions in her proposed budget likely would not stand, and the impact on revenue and state disbursements will further burden the local property tax. If we do choose to spend up to our debt limit on one project, then let's collectively understand that future demands require that we either override our fiscal policy, which is possible, and/or we address the needs through annual increases in reserves, which, by the way, translates into higher end-year taxes. And putting reserves together for that list of items will not be a minor task. Suggestions that existing bond retirements will help minimize the impact of the total bond requirement for this project don't provide the complete picture. The principal interest tax impact of those retiring bonds is minimal compared to the tax impact of the total bond requirements of this project. Annually, about eighty-five thousand dollars for the retired bonds will be replaced by seven hundred thousand plus. Prudent decision-making is not tax cutting. It is managing our tax increases in a balanced manner. Vote no on the article, and let's work to meet the needs of all departments while considering the impact of those investments on the taxes we pay. Let's support service at an affordable cost rather than any cost. Thank you.
My name is Gene Weber, and I live in New London, not far from the proposed new police location. First, I would like to thank Ashley and the Police Facility Advisory Committee for their work to address the critical public safety risks related to the current police station. I know some people seem to love the current location, but I'm not one of those. I believe it comes down to this. People's support for Article Three boils down to whether they believe, as I do, that the Bukeur location poses a public safety risk to our community. I see two intractable problems with the current location. First, there is no secure perimeter around the building, and second is the difficulty with entry and exit for police vehicles. So around the Bukeur building, for instance, every exterior wall of that building is flush with a shared public space. You've got Whipple Hall on one side, Osborne Sergeant, Town Green on the other side, a shared private residence driveway on the other, and then there's Siemens Road just a couple of steps off the other side of the building. We've heard from the police department about these risks, both to the department's staff and to the general public in close proximity to the facility. Crowds of people, maybe at an event or a festival, it's crowded around there a lot of times, including families with small children, might be in the way of the police as they seek to respond to emergency situations. Also, one major traffic accident on the corner of Main and Siemens could entirely cut off the police station from the rest of the community. Based on these public safety concerns, I hope you will join me in voting yes on Article Three. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if this works. Yeah, the gentleman from the PA company are right next to you. Let them, yeah, he probably knows how to do that. There you go.
Is that simple? Thank you. Oh, wow. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name's Tom Forster. The issue I'd like to address is a concern that many residents have expressed, which is that there's still many unknowns about the Siemens site. I've heard things like, these things should have been worked out already, but we just need a bit more information. Oops, sorry. Thank you. So I want to address these unknowns. The fact that there are knowns about this site is not surprising, particularly for the Siemens option. It's been on the table only for a short time, we've heard this. In fact, it was first discussed publicly at the October twenty-fourth Selectman meeting. So, you know, that's just a few months ago. And while some due diligence work, such as redlines delineation and some other high-level estimating, have started, much more is needed to address these uncertainties, unknowns. The Police Facilities Advisory Committee has acknowledged that, and during the final community forum last Saturday, they presented their plan for proceeding in a way that, in a phased way, that ensures that the new police station, if built at the Siemens site, would be built within the ten point four million dollar budget. The project would proceed, in a way, from one phase to the next, and this is the key, only as they do the analysis and go through the work, would only proceed to the next step if no showstoppers or other significant unexpected cost items, say an issue with sledge or something like that, is uncovered. Okay? So let's summarize briefly what are these phases. The largest expenditure is four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, okay, for the design work. Another large chunk is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for site prep. Together, that's more than half of the total that's being asked for. Okay? The plan is, and the process is in place, to ensure that those funds are spent only after the remaining due diligence work has been done, the remaining discovery work to confirm that this is a suitable site. Okay? Just for the record, the other, second-largest amount of cost is to purchase a property for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay? If a showstopper is uncovered, that property can be sold, probably back to the Garvys, or if they waive their right for first refusal, it could be repurposed for some other town need or sold to somebody else. Less than fifty thousand dollars of the entire proposal is for doing these studies and for keeping, okay, so that might be lost. So I'm going to go very quickly. Why lump all this together? We need to lump all this together in one proposal. Otherwise, we finish the analysis and upfront work in July, and then we have to wait until the next town meeting, eight months later, to fund going forward if it's successful. That makes no sense. We need to fund it now and then trust the committee and our selectmen to do their job and do it right and do it well, like they have, in a public, transparent manner, which they've committed to. Thank you.
I'm Lindsay Lynn Harkins. I also just wanted to say some thank yous, actually, which I realize is a bit premature before we vote, but either way, it's deserved. So first of all, thank you, the Garvey Trust, for being willing to enter into an agreement on your property that even allows this whole New Hampshire town meeting process. It's not a concession many would or have to make, especially in this market. Thank you to the groups of volunteers, committees passed and present, who so carefully and conscientiously looked into this matter from every conceivable angle. I've lost count of how many studies there have been. I know it was a lot, though, each and every single time. Thank you to admin, select board, Michael Todd, you're crushing it always. Thank you to really everybody here, opposers, tough question askers. I would maybe draw the line at eminent domain, but you know what? Comments and suggestions are great. All of that to be said, I want to make sure I address the last major thank you, and that is to all of our NLPD officers, Chief Cobb, past chiefs, dispatch, all of you. In addition to your regular duties, you have also given up countless hours of your own time just to reach this basic step, year after year, again and again. Every year the same, but also with a little creative flair added, kind of like those studies. But thank you for getting us this far again, because either way, land or no land, this committee or that committee, building or no building, pick a study, any study, the cost of doing business is now or later, again or not again. I will say it as many times, though, just to make sure you hear it, you are all very appreciated, and we thank you. I have, thank, I have one more thing, a little side note. I don't know what this means, but I'm told from a reliable source that Phase Two will address the other unknown variables. Thank you.
If I may, just before you speak, I've been given an email by the Garvys. Those are the sellers of the property, and this email was delivered to Casey. And if you will permit me to do so, I will quickly read the two paragraphs that John has stated with respect to this parcel. Is that all right with you?
Three minutes.
Got it. Three minutes. Won't take that. Cotton and I have followed the discussion about the need for a new police station from the beginning. We listened to the facts and the opinions expressed by all, and we both reached the conclusion that a new station was necessary for the reasons that have been repeatedly and thoughtfully stated by the Police Facility Advisory Committee, Chief Cobb, and others. Last year, I was approached by the town regarding our twenty acres on Siemens Road, which is held in trust in my name. I was asked if we would consider selling a portion of it for the police station. Cotton and I discussed it, and because we both support the town and the new police station, we agreed to sell. This was agreed, this was not something we were looking to do. The sale would involve most of the frontage on Siemens Road. We agreed to the price suggested by the town with conditions. One, that any construction would be dark-skY lighted compliant, and two, that we would be allowed the opportunity to repurchase the property for the same price as the sale if the town did not go through with the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Keith. First, Kim and Bill, thank you for all you've done for this town. It's been an honor to work with you. For several years, the debate of a new or refurbished police station has been debated in this community. I've been an employee of the New London Police Department for the past twelve years and currently hold the position of lieutenant, and this has always been the topic. I'm telling you again that the current police station building is inadequate in almost all aspects. A careful analysis of twenty-five Siemens Road has been completed by three separate professional firms over the years, and they all point to the fact that the needs of this department cannot be met by staying at the current location. The lot is too small, and our wonderful neighbor next door is not selling. Your police department is the only town department that operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There is always an officer on duty and a dispatcher in the communication center. This building is essential to our town, members of the police department, and the community. Some deficiencies: our current building has floor-to-ceiling windows. This is a security issue. Our shared driveway with our neighbor, this creates movement issues with police cars. The section of Siemens Road is extremely congested and creates line-of-sight issues pulling out onto the road. Officers have almost been hit, and our driveway and parking lot are not secure. We have people walk around our building, knocking on windows, looking for answers. The amount of times the sewage has backed up and flooded our locker rooms is now at at least thirteen times in the past two years. In times of inclement weather, hot or cold, the police cruisers that are at the station, they sit there and they idle. There are critical tools in these cars, and when these need to be used, they need to be in working order. With that, our garage space is severely undersized. If you haven't noticed, we are transitioning to police SUVs because no manufacturer is making a sedan-style police car anymore. With our current garage space, only one SUV can fit in it. I've heard the argument of a new location on Siemens Road being too far away from the schools in the event of an active shooter is very inaccurate. Police officers are out on the road most of the day being proactive with their patrol duties. The on-duty officer could be right down the street or assisting another town, another neighboring town's police department. I can tell you that most mornings at eight fifteen AM, I am at the school greeting kids as they start their day, and their safety and the safety of the staff is always on my mind and the officers of this department. Our schools are safe, and our schools are safe, and staff district-wide have received the appropriate training to help mitigate the threat. That's been three minutes? I'll wrap it up. By voting yes on Article Three, the town is moving beyond patching together our current building and providing temporary fixes, because that's what has been done for years. It is a waste of my tax dollars, and it's a waste of your tax dollars to keep putting lipstick on a pig. No pun intended. Thank you.
Before I recognize Chief Cobb to speak, I need to acknowledge the fact that she, last time I checked, was a resident of the town of Sunapee.
Correct.
So the only way she can speak is this meeting, is if you grant her leave to do so. So raise your cards if you want to hear from Chief Cobb, and then there you go. Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for giving me permission to speak tonight. My name is Emily Cobb, and I currently serve as your police chief for the town of New London. I've been in law enforcement for over twenty years. I've been here in New London since two thousand sixteen, and I have been your police chief since two thousand twenty. Certainly throughout my tenure as a police officer here and before, the topic of what to do with the police station has been a constant thread in the fabric of our community conversation. I have been witness to and participated in hundreds of hours of meetings, analyses, studies, and careful consideration related to this project. The Police Facilities Advisory Committee has dedicated themselves over the past year to the thoughtful debate and analysis, and they've put forth a recommendation that I believe would allow the town to continue the momentum of moving forward in a positive direction for the townspeople and staff of the police department. As the chief, I have felt extremely valued and respected throughout the process of collaborating with the Police Facilities Advisory Committee, and I thank them for their work, especially this past year. The current building and location is a constant source of stress and anxiety for me. Everything from the undesirable and unsafe location, poor design and layout, the high-risk, high-liability areas like the housing of critical computer and radio components in the same room as the sprinkler riser, the public exposure to the dangerous aspects of police work that we do, and the constant need for your police officers to overcome adversity in our daily operations is almost too much to bear. No one wants to feel unsafe in their work environment. No one wants to chalk up the sweeping deficiencies of our workspace as, oh, well, that's just the way it is, or it's worked for them so far. No one wants to humiliate an arrestee by having to walk them in handcuffs down Siemens Road, around the corner, over to our processing area. These, among others, are all supporting reasons why I respectfully request that you vote yes on Article Three. The men and women of the New London Police Department, excuse me, I'm so proud of them for coming to work every day as they do. Forgive me. The men and women of the New London Police Department, we know that you support us in a variety of ways, and for that, we truly are grateful. We feel your support in our operating budget, in our wages and benefits, and in the waves and smiles that we get from you all day throughout the day. In fact, we can hardly drive down Main Street without having our hand up at the ready, ready to wave back to folks. We truly do appreciate your support, and so for those reasons, I am also asking for your support in this way, too, by voting yes on Article Three. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Cardillo. Like many people in this room, my wife Megan and I were drawn to the town of New London as a great community to raise our children and call home. New London had a vibrant downtown corridor with shopping, restaurants, a library, a town common, and our fire and police departments. Over the years, our town has lost many businesses and storefronts, and we also lost the regional middle school. Many New England towns experienced the same dynamic. Those towns with centralized municipal offices, retail services, and fire and police presence have maintained a vibrant Main Street and continue to thrive. New London has made strong efforts to keep our Main Street relevant: changes at the Barn Playhouse campus, the foresight by a group of local investors to save the New London Inn, the addition of sidewalks and a roundabout, the vision by a former group of selectmen who understood the importance of the current police department location for our residents and the students at Colby Sawyer College. They understood that parents who considered sending a child to this college took comfort into the access of safety services. I remain a strong advocate for giving our police department a new and improved working environment. While serving on the Budget Committee, funds were appropriated to install bulletproof glass at the P- at the PD and town offices, and to move the electronics out of the sprinkler and water supply room. It puzzles me why those changes were never made. While working on the first police site selection committee, our guidance from our chief and lieutenant was to focus on sites on the main corridor from the Catholic Church to the post office. They dismissed sites that were too far off of Main Street and into residential neighborhoods. This recently changed. I have advocated for keeping our police station as part of the fabric of our Main Street and agree the facility needs help. The current effort to move into a secluded area with low visibility and less access for our community is confusing. I strongly believe we can make the current location work. It may require a new building. It may require the abutting property, and it will certainly require a coordinated effort by community members. The current location will better serve our residents, the college, and our visitors. Once moved, there is no going back. Please vote no on Article 3.
My name is John Tilly, and my wife and I moved here in 1999, just like Joe and Megan, to raise our children because it's a great place to do that. It's a great town. All of the passion that's here tonight, whether you're for or against it, is actually a great sign for how passionately people feel about this town. It warms the heart. When I moved here in 1999, we were actually debating this very issue then. I personally have sat on three different groups, some formal, some informal, to actually talk about this over the past 26 years. I haven't even sat on this group. We know the problems. I mean, we can admit that. You've all heard them. You don't need me to say this again. In fact, I stand before you saying, I've had years where I didn't want to move it either for many of the reasons that we've heard. But the thing that I can tell you is that as we've waited, as we've kicked the can down the road, it simply gets more expensive. I don't want my taxes going up. I really don't, and it's scary times. But I would encourage you to vote now because what seems like a savings today is actually just a massive expense tomorrow. It's only going to get more expensive. Let's at least study this, get a plan together, and come back next year for another vote. I urge you to support Number 3.
Hi, my name is Liz Malouf, and I've lived in London for 26 years. Thank you. I never envisioned myself getting up here and talking to everybody, but I am pissed off. This has been kicked down the road long enough, long enough, and I really feel, especially since the email was just read to us, that says if we don't proceed, they will buy back the property. That is no choice not to move forward with this. No choice at all. It is getting more expensive. I am a physical conservative, and in this day and age, I would have never thought that I'd be saying this, but this town has to come to grips with supporting their police department more than they have, even though they feel they thank them and they thank them. They're cleaning up sewage from the floors, not a maintenance person that's getting paid, the police department. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, we need to do better. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laurie Shive. My husband Mike Morgan and I are actually New London residents. We also own a small business on Main Street. Some of you may have visited. We came to this town and fell in love with it, and we wanted a town just like New London. We wanted a town with a strong community and also a solid infrastructure, a dedicated fire department, a top-notch hospital, a strong school district, and a college, and also a top caliber police department with strong ties to the community. Now, I will say, I don't know how often or how frequently there are police officers manning the police station currently. I will tell you that every time I have driven down Main Street between midnight and 5:00 a.m., and it has been many nights, there has been a police cruiser somewhere along Main Street, and I bet you that Chief Cobb's officers can tell you exactly when my bakers are late showing up at the bakery. They are on Main Street, and it doesn't matter where the police station is in New London. They are active 24/7. We have a safe and prosperous town. I think everyone can agree on that. It attracts residents, we all, many of us moved here from someplace else, students, and yes, even tourists from Massachusetts that come to the bakery, in part because we have a strong police department that is strong in prevention and community interaction. And we believe that providing Chief Cobb and her officers with the right tools, training, technologies, and the right facility is critical to that strength of this town. So the way I see it, voting yes on Article 3, which, by the way, I don't think anyone said this, but the Select Board voted 3 to 0 on this to support it, and the Budget Committee voted 8 to 2. Is that correct? Good, I want to make sure I got that right. So I think that there are three reasons you should vote for Article 3. One is that it is fiscally responsible. If you are a taxpayer and you own a property that's $500,000, I think by my math, it costs, it will cost you, this voting yes will cost you a raise of $18.50, $18.50 in your tax bill, and that will allow us to move forward with work on a new police station, something the town voted to do last year with a money-back guarantee from the Garvys, is what I understood, if it doesn't work out. It is functionally imperative. We need a police station that optimizes police effectiveness and gives Chief Cobb the infrastructure she says she needs. Without a new station, by the way, I can imagine the very real possibility of losing police officers, and I would understand that they would rather work in a town that supports their vital work with a modern facility than in a facility with sewage in the basement. Finally, I believe that voting yes for Article 3 will future-proof our town, which means we're spending the money now instead of spending it or deciding to spend it later. Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Ensign, and for the longest time, I thought I was the last speaker, but there's, and Bob Bowers might still catch up. I think this is fundamentally an important vote. It's been some time, over the last few years, we've had opportunities that have slipped by us. We've seen costs rise, and now we have the opportunity to take an affirmative step to investigate a piece of land. I would appreciate the fact that John sent his email indicating the transaction and that they would have the opportunity to acquire, reacquire the property should the decision be made. This isn't the best site. So there is a fallback. There's a way to step back from it and recoup some of the money, and I think that it's worth investigating the site. I was going to have my daughter read something. We were talking on the phone a couple weeks ago, and she said, well, I'll read something at town meeting for you, and I said, you know, that's great. But the more I thought about it, the importance that I feel about this from a time when we only had a single policeman in town back in the early 80s and had three full gas stations, one of which is depicted on the front of our town report, it's fundamentally time that we take a step forward. If it doesn't work out the way one envisions, then we have the opportunity to step back and put the property back to the owners. So the more I thought about it, I said it was unfair to myself. I said it's unfair for my daughter to read something that I would write and that I had the obligation to, I would be disappointed in myself if I did not book a flight up here in order to be able to stand here and cast my ballot, which she could not do for me. My problem now is, which one of my friends do I want to cancel out their vote?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Steve. Before Tom sets in, I just want to mention that the reason I wrote, read that Garvey piece is because they're presently unable to attend town meeting. They're out of town, so that's why we did that as opposed to him being here. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, Michael. My name's Tom Carley. I've spent the last 30 years as the CFO of three different companies, so I think I've got a pretty good financial grounding. I believe that this project, as it's currently configured, is deeply flawed. There are too many risks. Let me cite three. We have no idea what the site preparation costs will be. We've heard numbers from $3 to $5 million. Until they start moving dirt around, we don't know. Second flaw, we don't even have a design of the police station building yet. It's only after they do the site prep they can come up with the design. That is not very good. The third is, we've got the Select Board conducting a survey coming up on a dispatch center. There's a question whether we should even have a dispatch center. If we decide to get rid of the dispatch center, it's going to have a major impact on the design. So I think what we need to do here is acknowledge the risks, acknowledge the flaws, send it back to the committee, have them do some more work, and bring it around to a vote where there's a lot less risk. I found it interesting that the one person with engineering and construction expertise that was on the Police Facilities Committee voted no on this, and he said, this is a rush job, we need to spend more time on it. Let's be responsible here. Let's get to the right conclusion. People are frustrated, but that doesn't justify making a bad decision, and a $10 million police station becomes 15 or 20. Vote no on this. Thanks.
My name is Bill Steele. My wife Andy and I came here in 1972 from Philadelphia and raised two girls through the school system, and were always impressed with the quality of our police force, which has Stephen mentioned, grew over the years. And what I hear saying at the root here is showing respect, increased support to our police department. How do we best show support for our police department? Speaking as a graduate of the military police in the service 112 years ago, and being a summer cot down in Ocean City, New Jersey for three years, I can say the best way to support our police is significantly increased salaries, significantly increased benefits, and significantly increased training where the chief and selectmen direct. That's the way we can support them. And as Joey mentioned, a quality remodeling of the building, not, it won't be a Taj Mahal, but it'll be a great improvement. And again, we focused respect on the police, salaries, benefits, training. Two quick stories on training. About eight years ago, the town began to get targeted with telephone scams, and a friend from Hilltop got a call late at night saying that his grandson was just arrested in a different state and needed $6,000 immediately to get him bailed out, and John sent the money. Found out later, it was a scam. No hint of technology in the state, let alone in New London, that could help him. About four years ago, three years ago, four years ago, Andy and I were targeted, smooth targets on the phone, sending different amounts of dollars or a credit card number, and I would be able to get a Mercedes to drive and have. Reported this to our police station, boom, within hours, an officer was there, told me we needed more technology, couldn't really, couldn't really help because we didn't have the technology. So to support our police, let's invest in the training, let's invest in the technology, and obviously salaries, and then do remodeling.
We have exhausted our supply of persons willing to speak. And I have a couple of names in front of me that didn't appear, and I don't see him stepping up, and I'm going to just see what you guys want to do. What do you want to do? All right, I see we have a motion to call the question. Put it to a vote. Cut off debate. All those in favor? Signify by, all those opposed? The ayes have it. Debate is cut off. Now, all bond articles require a paper ballot. So bear with me while I find my sample. All right. So here's what we're going to do. We are going to go and we are going to separate the pink ballot off the back of the pack. Pink only. Take your pencil or pen or borrow it from your neighbor. Indicate your preference on Article 3. Yes in favor, no opposed. And, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, well, hey, dang. Now, what do we do? Well, my town clerk wanted to speak on Article 3, and I think I inadvertently, cut him off. He says he's fine. He's all right. All right, well, it's, it's, it's your meeting. So, so if you want, then we will suspend this. We know we're going to do this. We're going to use a pink ballot regardless of what happens. We're going to do that. So if you want to hear from our town clerk, signify by raising your blue cards. If you do not, raise your blue card. The ayes have it. So Will, and further, I'm going to ask another grant, would you grant him leave to speak to you from here, or would you like him to go down there? You okay with here? Go ahead. You have the four, three minutes.
Okay. I will, I will time myself. So, okay, boom. So, thank you all for coming. It's awesome sitting up here and seeing all of you. There's a ton of people here. We put a ton of work into making this happen, so thank you for coming and making the work worth it. Beyond that, I wanted to say, no, it's a pretty simple word, a swift dismissal. While it might temporarily stop an unwanted action or idea, it fundamentally fails to address the underlying problem. A no is a barrier, not a bridge. In essence, no is a dead end. To truly solve problems, we must move beyond negation as a town and embrace the power of exploration, understanding, and collaboration. I would suggest the way to achieve that relative this issue at hand is to vote yes on Article 3. I fully understand that we have a boatload of expenses coming our way. There is no doubt, they add up to a ton of money. My concern isn't necessarily that we can't afford to pay for all of that that needs to get done. My concern is that it hits all at the same time. If it hits all at the same time, that's not good for us, you know? And every day that we don't do something is a day closer to that happening. Thank you very much to the Cleveland Garvey families for continually putting New London above themselves. We have a great deal in front of us. It's a good land at a good price with a buyback plan. It's ideal. Like, if any of us could get that deal personally, we would take it. So I would ask that you vote yes on Article 3, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. So now, we're back to Article 3, paper ballot, pink one. Mark your ballot. Do not tear it in half. Mark it, keep it intact, and I'm going to ask our clerk to note the time, and the ballot boxes will be open for one time. And the ballot boxes will be open for one hour. You may, now, I'm going to grant a, yeah, grant a short recess with the banging of the gavel. That will start the timer. And at that point, you may make your way up and place your ballots in one of the three ballot boxes. There's two here, one in the back. And we will, we will take a short recess while this starts.
Well done, Michael.
You got through that.
Sorry I didn't tell you about Bill. She's, I think, I was Bill, like, 25 years ago.
You did, but I just, you should have, you should have kicked her. You should have kicked her. Well, it's okay. People, they still need to speak. And, you know, they can, I can be all, all involved on anything.
Well, let me see what you guys take here. Oh, my goodness.
You were going to talk.
Oh, yeah. Well, we don't, you know, we don't.
Good job. Your tolerance has been fantastic.
I'm trying. Right down in the front.
Got after me right away. But that guy was a check shirt in here. Got after me right away.
Guys, turn this off for just a second. I'll ring the bell, and you can turn it back on.
They screwed up again, Kim. Come on.
John's talking about reconstricting, thinking that you have to be on the prevailing side to motion to reconstrict, reconstrict, reconcideration. But we don't even know his own left side anyway. It's a, it's a secret yes, no, yes, no ballot. How do we even know?
So we're not going to do that until after the votes become.
We have to wait till it results, so.
Can't do it now. Come on, John.
How's it going? How's it going?
All right. We ready to get going?
Hello, where's Bebe?
Where's Bebe?
Yeah, she's over there.
Is Bebe? What are you looking at me for?
Bring the bell. Bring the bell. She'll be here.
If you all could take your seats, we will resume with a few notices and a consideration of the next article. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, folks, if we could resume and take our seats and we're ready to resume with the rest of the business at hand.
Twenty-seven, two selectmen and an app and a, and a proxy, and a proxy.
Who's the proxy you're talking about?
Garvey. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for uh, your, your short break. I hope you all had a chance to vote. The ballot box will remain open for another thirty-eight minutes. At that time, we will collect all the ballots and our ballot clerks will count them and we'll get you a result as soon as possible. Uh, let's see. Oh, the other item is, just by way of recap, we heard from two selectmen and twenty-seven speakers on this article. That is, and one proxy from the Garveys, and that is some of the most robust civil debate I've heard in my ten years as moderator, and I commend the body for it. Okay. For the articles four through ten, please note that we are voting on the numbers in bold on the right-hand column. And what is your pleasure on Article Four? Do, do, do I have a motion to move, so moved is the seconded and seconded? At that point, the chair will recognize Bill Helm.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. General Government Operations includes funding for town office staffing, stipends for the selectman, moderator, and the trustees of the trust funds. It also includes funds for assessing cemeteries and maintenance of town buildings and the town's property and liability insurance. Increases in this area come from modest increases in hours for part-time staff in the town clerk's office and the finance office, town property and liability insurance, and the selectman's discretionary account that is used for items that are not specifically budgeted for. Examples of these expenditures include the community forums that are held at Colby Sawyer College several times a year and participation in the Coalition Communities 2.0 program, which is the group of towns that are working to ensure that state changes to education funding do not have a disproportionate impact on New London taxpayers. We ask that you approve this article.
Thank you, Bill. It's a further discussion on Article Four. Seeing no hands, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Article Four as printed in the warrant signify by raising your blue cards, all those opposed. The ayes have it. Article Four carries. Article Five, what is your pleasure?
Moved.
I've heard moved and seconded. Chair recognizes Janet.
Article Five. This article funds the public safety operations of the town, including police, fire, emergency management, and dispatching. This budget includes funding to add a fourth full-time firefighter. Other budget increases are due in part to increases in employee insurance as discussed previously. There have been suggestions that the town could save money by having dispatching services provided by outside agencies instead of by the men and women in the dispatching center located in the police department. New London Dispatching also provides dispatching services to Sunapee, Wilmot, Newbury, and Sutton. New London currently pays sixty-four percent of the dispatching budget, with the other towns making up the remaining thirty-six percent based on their level of calls. The selectmen have committed to looking at this issue in fiscal year 2026, once the newly-elected selectmen and soon-to-be-hired town administrator are on board. Dispatching services are critical to the safe and efficient delivery of public safety services, so no, no changes will be recommended without a thorough investigation of all aspects of the issue. You will likely hear more about this at the March 2026 town meeting. We ask that you approve this article.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Five. Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Article Five signify by raising your blue cards, all opposed. The ayes have it. Article Five passes. Article Six, what is your pleasure? Moved and seconded. The chair will now recognize Bebe Hammond. Casey, sorry. We go back a long way. Sorry.
This article funds our Public Works Department, highway, street lighting, transfer stations, sewer, and the hazardous waste collection days that the town participates in. Cemeteries and town buildings are also under the Public Works Department, but those departments are included under Article Four, general government buildings, as required by the state DRA. As many of you know, Sam Clark was appointed in August to replace Bob Harrington. Sam previously supervised the sewer department. He is settling in very well to his new position and is coming up with new ideas all the time of ways to manage his department effectively. He understands the strong desire for improved sidewalks, and you will be seeing work in that area this spring and summer. The decrease in this section of the budget is due to the work of the sewer department in reducing the flows of wastewater to the Sunapee Wastewater Treatment Plant. Flow reductions we achieved by detecting and fixing areas of water infiltration into the sewer lines. We ask that you approve this article.
Further discussion on Article Six. Questions? No? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article Six signify. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Six passes. Article Seven, what's your pleasure? Moved and seconded. Chair recognizes Bill Helm.
Thank you. This article includes funding for health and welfare activities. It includes funds for the nonprofit agencies that assist the town's residents, including the Kirsars Council on Aging, the VNA, London Hospital Ambulance, and CASA, which appoints trained volunteers to assist children who have experienced abuse and neglect. It also provides a stipend for the health officer, Dr. Nick Bayer. The welfare department is headed by Celeste Cook. This budget includes funding to go from a, this budget will include funding to go from a stipend position to a part-time position to have more time to assist applicants to get state assistance relieving the need for town assistance. The welfare department has experienced an increased need for payments due to lack of affordable housing, as people who cannot find or afford the rising cost of housing seek financial assistance from the town. We ask that you approve this article.
Further discussion on Article Seven. Questions? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article Seven signify by raising your cards, all those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, what is your pleasure? And seconded? Chair recognizes Janet Kidder.
This article includes the Recreation Department, Tracy Memorial Library, Archives, Town Boards, Conservation Commission, Housing Commission, Energy Committee, and support of the four lake protective associations that provide lake hosts to inspect boats for invasive species. Funds are also included for the Tree Warden to take care of the town's trees, which usually includes pruning, but could also include removal and replanting. One new group is King Solomon's Lodge in Elkins. This property is used by boaters on Pleasant Lake to park vehicles and trailers when they are on the water. Use of this land for this purpose alleviates traffic issues in the Elkins Beach and boat launch areas. We ask that you approve this article.
Thank you, Janet. Further questions or comments on Article Eight? Back left corner, who's down there? Do I have, uh, Linda, Linda Jackman? Please wait, madam, for the Linda to bring you that cigar. And please identify yourself.
Molly Morgan. I was curious about the increase in the library budget and what that is for.
I will turn this over to the director of the library. He can answer this question.
Ooh, you may have to go to the center microphone if you would, please. That's, that'd be great, thank you. Okay, and for the record, um, please tell me where you're from.
Hi, everybody, I'm Richard Tulliver, I'm the library director.
From?
Currently living.
Excuse me, Richard, you need to tell me where you're from.
I am currently living in Lebanon.
Okay, so I have to do this, I just have to say he doesn't live in Lebanon, so we, he can speak and answer the question if you grant him leave to do so. Done, thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. So, the increase in the library budget for this upcoming fiscal year, at least regarding our operating budget, the vast majority of that increase is to offset prior years, the capital reserve that the library already had not being there anymore. We have already pooled all of those funds, and in terms of moving forward, our operating budget is three percent over what it was the prior year. We are asking for six point six percent in the town appropriation request, which is a larger increase than the three percent, to offset that lack of capital reserve funding that in the past we had pulled from.
Does that answer the question that was posed by the voter? Are there further questions of our library director regarding this appropriation? Seeing none, you may step down, thank you. Any other further questions or comments about this Article Eight? Or any line item in it? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Article Eight as printed signify by raising your cards, all those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Eight passes. Article Nine, what's your pleasure? Moved and seconded, we moved to Article Nine, and the chair recognizes Bebe Casey.
Mr. Moderator, could we please pass over this article because the interest cost will depend on the outcome of the vote?
The bond, the bond issue for the proposed Article Three is included in here?
The interest is here.
Understood. Let us, um, pass over, I, yeah, I, do I have a second to that one? Do you, does everyone understand what we're doing here? Okay. The deal is that the numbers that are proposed here are calculated based on the passage and acceptance of Article Three, which we don't know yet, and we won't know until the balls close, and then we count the ballots. So what Selectman Helm is proposing, we do is we simply pass over this and return to it after the vote, the results of the vote are known. All those in favor of passing over Article Nine, sign, all right, all those opposed? Great, Article Nine is passed over initially, we will return to it when we know the results of the bond vote. Thank you. Article Ten, what's your pleasure? Moved and seconded, we accept Article Ten, and the chair will call on Selectman Helm.
Thank you. Capital Reserve Funds are the town's savings accounts. Funds are placed in the funds, funds are placed in these reserve funds for future purchases. The Capital Improvement Plan, completed annually by the Planning Board, is one mechanism for planning that the Selectman and Budget Committee use to determine the level of capital reserve funding needed. This budget seeks total payments in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for deposit into eight separate funds. In some cases, these funds are available to the Selectman during the year without a specific vote of town meeting, because previous town meetings have authorized the Selectman to use the funds for the purposes stated in the fund. This year, the Selectmen expect to use capital reserve funds under their authority to expend as follows: fifteen thousand dollars to maintain the town's cemeteries, sixty thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a backhoe in the Highway Department, and ten thousand dollars for a zero-turn mower in the Highway Department. We ask that you approve this article.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on Article Ten or any line item in it? I see a question over here of Vicki. Wait, she's got the mic right next to you, thank you.
Peter Vedeva, I live here in New London, and I'm on the Energy Commission, or Energy Committee. My question is, is it possible to increase any of these capital reserve funds tonight? Than the amounts that are shown on, on this warrant?
They may be properly amended, yes. Provided that the aggregate total of all the proposed amendments does not exceed ten percent of the budget less the debt service. So, yeah, you're, you're free to putz around with them, but we gotta calculate it and make sure that the total that you're proposing, if it passed, would not exceed that ten percent limit. So go ahead, if you want to amend, please do.
So what I'm getting at is the Energy Commission Reserve is at twenty thousand. Back in 2018, when this came on board, it was supposed to be thirty thousand every year. Last year, it was not funded at all, and so I'm, at this point, I'm just kind of questioning why it's only twenty thousand and not back to thirty thousand as it was designed to be.
Thank you, Peter. The current balance as of June thirtieth, i.e. the last day of the current fiscal year, in this account will be one hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. By adding twenty thousand dollars to this, the total on July first will be one hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. In talking with the Energy Commission during the budgeting process, we learned that they thought that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be adequate funding for the current year, and in order to make sure that we gave money as many different places as we could, we settled on twenty thousand dollars, because the Energy Commission said that would be adequate funds for the projects they had in mind.
Does that answer your question, Peter?
It answers the question, I don't, I don't agree with that answer, I guess, is where I'm coming from.
Well, your options are to amend if you want to see an increase and see if the amendment flies, that is your option, and you can explain to the voters why you feel you'd like to amend this capital reserve, and if your amendment prevails, then we will change the total, and then we will vote on Article Ten as amended. That's your option. What would you like to do?
I'm gonna pa, I'm gonna pass. I, I am disappointed that it's only twenty thousand and not what the town had agreed upon, you know, funding this thirty thousand every year. We, we agreed last year to allow it not to be funded at all, but we do have projects, we've brought them, you know, forth to the Selectmen, and I, I just feel like we're kicking the can down the road again. So I, I'm disappointed to see again that we're underfunded once again. I, I feel like it's not enough money in there to do the things that we've, you know, brought to, you know, the board's attention, so I'm, I'm willing to pass tonight just because I feel like it's, it's beyond, or we've, we've had enough debate on other topics tonight, I don't want to drag this down, but I am trying to bring to the town's attention that this should be funded every year at the thirty thousand. We do have appropriate things on board to spend that money on, and I'm just trying to, you know, educate, you know, while we have people here tonight. Jamie Hess did hand out these little, you know, yellow cards, and I hope people will read those and take the survey and support us.
Well, Peter, I'm not trying to drag this meeting out at all, but the only way you're gonna find out how the people feel is to ask them, and the only way you do that is through an amendment. All right.
So I, I motion that we increase that reserve from twenty thousand to thirty thousand.
All right, we have an amendment, and we have a second, to increase that capital reserve for energy conservation from twenty thousand to thirty thousand. Is there further discussion or comment on the amendment? And that would raise the total by ten, so it would be one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, non-bifocals. Yes, Bill, go ahead, by all means.
The Selectmen will do not support this amendment because the amount was arrived at after consideration and discussion with the Energy Committee, and they had agreed on this. and discussion with the Energy Committee, and they had agreed on this amount and told us that this would be sufficient for the projects they expected to engage in during the 2026 fiscal year. We chose to therefore put more money into other accounts and look forward to talking to the Energy Commission again in future years when their projects come forward that they tell us they need the funds for for that year. But again, as we know from earlier discussions tonight, money's tight, and so we tried to allocate it as best we could.
Thank you, Bill. Further discussion on the amendment of $10,000? I see a hand way in the back. Yes, please. Go ahead, Linda.
Molly Morgan. I have a master's degree in environmental science. I've been studying climate change for the last 20 years. We're at the point right now in our society that we cannot be doing enough to address climate change. One way is through additional solar panels on municipal buildings. We could make additions to additional EV chargers. There's many, many ways we could expand the composting program that addresses waste and climate issues. There are 1,000 ways that we can address energy conservation. And when I look at this budget and I see the libraries improvements, which is wonderful, we need libraries, but I see an increase for historical markers, which I support. But I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, and I would like to increase the budget for energy.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm going to ask you to hold that thought for just a minute. I understand what you want to do, but we don't... We can't stack amendments one atop the other. We're going to have to vote on the initial amendment first, and if it fails, then you may make an amendment to the original amount stated in the warrant. But we can't piggyback amendments. It just gets too crazy. So if you just hold that thought for a minute, and I will take another couple of comments on the original amendment of 10. Let's get that voted on one way or the other, and then we can come back to your amendment. Does that sound reasonable? I think it's parliamentally correct. Okay.
So if I wanted to...
I got it. Hang on, Joe. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. Just so if I wanted to make an increase, I would wait to do that after this one was a...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Please do. Okay. Chair, I see Joe Cubit standing at the microphone. Go ahead, Joe.
My name's Joseph Cubit. We are residents of New London. I'm speaking now, not as a private citizen, but as the chair of the trustee of the trust funds. Five or six years ago, a group of us that were very involved in environmental persuaded the town to put aside $30,000 a year towards the array of the solar panels that's down in the sewer, the lagoon, and on the highway garage. I would just like to point out that last year, the Energy Committee got $0 in 2025. And the year before that, their $30,000 request was cut to $15,000. So they are really running behind what it takes to private... To bring that array into the public domain owned by the town to get the full value. So that's all I have to say about it. The numbers are much lower than were anticipated when we first started this project five, six years ago.
Thank you. There's a gentleman behind you. I'm sorry.
Bob Barton.
Thank you.
I worked... I've been retired for 10 years, but worked for 35 years doing financing for energy efficiency and renewable energy in the billions of dollars. And a lot of that work was done in the public sector. Over my career and our team's career, we probably worked with 200, 300 cities throughout the United States. To have a city like New London... We moved here, by the way, just five months ago, so we're very new. I'm 50 years in Vermont and trying to get used to Vermont, to New Hampshire now. For New London to have the budget of $20,000 for reserve is remarkably small. And so I would highly encourage... I mean, I think it's pathetically small, actually. And most energy efficiency projects run by municipalities save the municipality money. So I'm not talking about composting, which I don't know what that woman was talking about, but if it's related to energy, it often has a net savings to the town. So with a lot of the public sector projects that we did, the town would put up $1 million, but it would save $300,000. So within three years, it had all its money back. And then it had $300,000 every year forever, plus whatever the increase of energy was. So I would highly encourage the town to think about what it can do for energy conservation, and that this man here's request to get up to $30,000 is pretty modest and realistic.
Thank you. I am reminded by our town clerk that 15 minutes remain until the ballot boxes on the bond issue will be closed. So if any of you have not yet voted on the bond on Article Three, please do so in the next 15 minutes. Okay. Thank you. Further comments or questions on the proposed amendment to the Energy Conservation Capital Reserve of adding $10,000? Any further comments on this amendment? Are you ready for the question? All right. All those in favor of amending the allocation of the Energy Committee, Energy Conservation Committee, from $20,000 to $30,000 signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The amendment carries. This raises the total appropriation to $1,166,000. Now, if the woman in the back wishes to further amend, now is the time. You want to roll the dice? And it's up to you. It's your meeting.
Yes. Yes, I do. I have three children, and it was raised in the Select Board forum that climate change is a real huge issue. We're in the sixth largest extent... Sixth extinction, massive extinction of our planet's history. There is no question that there are massive changes. Looking at a winter that we had last year, it was mostly rain and not a lot of snow. We're watching it before our eyes. And a town like New London with the resources, we should be leaders in this area. We should be doing everything that we can. And quite honestly, you know, if things go the way that they are, you know, the historical markers, they're wonderful, but it's not going to necessarily save the endangered species that are threatened due to sort of this existential crisis. So I would like to put the $30,000 back in the budget from fiscal year 2025. To the gentleman's point that this is what was originally promised. And quite frankly, if there is an excess of funds in the order of $150,000, that isn't a lot of money. And I would not want to, I guess, what is it? The rob from Peter to pay Paul, but I don't think I would support the historical refurbishment if we can't basically do good with the commitments that the gentleman had said that it was supposed to be $30,000 each year. So I would like to put an additional $30,000 in... Back into the budget to make up for the zero that was done last year. Thank you.
All right. So you're proposing to amend the appropriation for the Energy Commission Capital Reserve Fund from the $30,000 that we had just amended it to, to $60,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. Is there further discussion on this Second Amendment? I see someone at the center microphone. I do not know your name. I'm sorry.
Charlie Giles, Mr. Monitor.
Oh, jeez. That's right, Charlie.
That's okay.
Now I see he's missing from the front seat. I didn't see...
Yeah. I get that at home all the time. Sorry. Thank you for hearing me out. 47 years here in New London, very proud, very grateful New London resident. I don't mean to make light of this, but I feel like I passed a birthday here this evening, and I'm about to pass my second. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did the Selectmen not just tell us that the Energy folks have told us that there is adequate funding for the projects they have in mind at this moment right now, and hence the $20,000 figure, which has just been amended to $30,000? I'm 1,000% in favor of a clean environment. I've got grandchildren. I want them to grow up in a clean world with sustainable energy, and I want them to enjoy nature, and I want them to enjoy a healthy life. I also want our law enforcement professionals not to have to scrape sewage off the basement. I'd also like them to be equipped with the proper equipment and proper facilities, and the public works folks, and the fire folks, and everybody to have the proper equipment they need. I'd also like to address all our water issues. I'd also like to make this the town that's affordable to retirees, having just retired myself November 1st. Okay? So there comes a time where we have to break this down. We've been told by the experts that $150,000 is adequate. We now have $160,000. I would urge this amendment, with much respect to the woman who's speaking about the environment, my heart is with you on the issue. But we have so many... So much water in the bucket, and it needs to be spread across a lot of flowers. I would urge that we vote this amendment down. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Further, I see Joe Cardillo. Yes, please.
Just a point of order. I'm trying to keep a scorecard here, who's on first.
Yep.
We amended that $20,000 to $30,000.
Correct.
A show of cards showed that we approved the amendment.
Bingo.
My question is this. We haven't voted to accept that yet, but we've amended it, but did we vote?
We have not voted on the total appropriation.
Therein lies my question. So the instruction to the woman in the back with her amendment, her amendment of $30,000 would be on top of the original $20,000?
No, no. No. We've amended it to 30. That passed. That's what's on the floor. That passed. Now she's proposing to amend it an additional 30.
Okay. So we...
And once that amendment passes, then we'll vote on the total appropriation.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. No problem. Happy to help. Yes?
I'm Jamie Hess. I am chair of the New London Energy Committee, and I want to start by thanking everyone for coming tonight, and thank you also for your support of the Energy Projects Capital Reserve Fund. And I would like to express my appreciation to the lady in the rear who proposed the Second Amendment. However, I feel like we have gone through a process where we have come up with numbers that made sense for the capital reserve funding. And at this time, I would like to speak against any further amendments to the... To this article. But I would like to say that anybody here who feels like we should be increasing contributions to the Energy Capital Reserve Fund should come to our Energy Committee meetings and work constructively within the town process to come up with perhaps a larger number at our next town meeting in 2026 if you feel that we should really be devoting more resources to energy projects and renewable energy. But for the time being, let's leave the contribution for this year at the $30,000 that was already approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And I erred. I have to say I erred, and that is to say we started a discussion on the Second Amendment, and I was rudely... Well, I wasn't rudely. I was thankfully reminded by my parliamentarian here that I neglected to get a second on her motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay. So now we can continue. Is there further discussion on the Second Amendment of $30,000 to increase the appropriation to the capital reserve to 60? Is there any further discussion? Yes. Linda? Wait, please wait for Linda, and then please identify yourself when you address the...
Sorry. I just have a question. Elena Williams?
You don't have to apologize.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's okay.
If we vote to increase it, where does this $10,000 come from? Like...
Well...
But it's the budget in the budget.
It...
Do we have to cut something in the budget, or...
Bill, would you like to explain to the voter where the...
You can increase the budget that is contained in all these articles we're talking about now by up to 10%. And the answer is that the taxpayer gets to pay for the additional additions.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Second Amendment to add an additional $30,000? And I see someone... Yes. Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much for everyone offering their feedback, and thank you for the chair of the Energy Conservation Commission. I am a busy parent and don't... Would love to be involved in, you know, a commission, the Energy Commission, but right now I don't have time, and this is a way I can try to make an impact. I guess my question would be, are there plans in that budget for additional EV chargers? Currently, there's only two in the town of New London, and I guess that would be my question back to the gentleman that spoke that... And I see there is a real need for that in our community.
Apparently, Jamie Hess is going to come to the center microphone and answer your question.
Okay. Just very quickly, I'm happy to report that Colby Sawyer College, in the past few months, installed four new electric vehicle charging stations, four new stalls, quite close to the Hogan Center, and they are public access. And that is in addition to the two-stall charging station at the Inn at Pleasant Lake. And there may actually be others, but I'm just aware of those six, four at Colby Sawyer and two at the Inn at Pleasant Lake. So we are in pretty good shape with EV charging. So the capital reserve fund, as it currently stands, we are hoping to install more municipal solar panels to continue the process that was voted on at town meeting in 2018 to move toward 100% renewable electricity for all our municipal facilities by the year 2030. Thanks.
Okay. Further comment or questions on the Second Amendment? Seeing none. Are you ready for the question on the Second Amendment? All right. So we're all clear on what we're voting on. We're voting to amend the $30,000 appropriation and make it 60 to the capital reserve. All those in favor of the amendment, the Second Amendment, please signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The Second Amendment fails. We are back to the First Amendment, which succeeded, which raised the $20,000 appropriation to 30. And so now we vote on Article Ten with a new total of $1,166,000. Are we all clear on what we're voting on now on Article Ten? I see hands at the back. Linda? I'm sorry. I got a...
Her side of the hall.
It's her side of the hall.
Yeah, it is the library.
Huh?
Do I have to wait?
No, please.
All right. I'm sorry. I did have a question.
I'm sorry. I didn't get your name.
Christine Klink.
Thank you.
Here in New London.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. I apologize.
That's all right.
My question was with reference to the $140,000 increase on the library, and I guess I wasn't totally clear from Article Eight, the $45,000 increase. So together, that's $200,000 more to the library. Could I get some clarification on what that's all about, please?
Yes, you may. Who would like to address that question? Bill?
So Christine, the answer there is that, again, in looking at all the different possibilities of how money might be spent, the library has done an excellent job of laying out a multi-year plan for how they... What they need to do to take care and maintain that iconic building on the corner of Pleasant Street and Main Street. So the current balance in the library fund is $65,513. If the $200,000 are added as of July 1st, they will then have the ability to carry out other plans that will use that money over the next couple of years. They've already got those plans laid out for us. Unlike the energy discussion, where there are not yet actual plans, there are actual plans for... actual plans for the use of the money by the library to continue to maintain their building.
Further question? Give him a minute.
So I might understand that the increase is buil, building maintenance and building renovation or restoration?
You're above my pay grade now, so I'm gonna ask Richard to come back up.
Thank you.
Okay, understood. Okay, while Richard's going to the microphone, which, and I'm gonna assume that you're granting him leave to answer this question as well? That, yeah, okay. The time has elapsed to close the ballot boxes on the bond issue on Article 3. So at this point in time, I would ask my ballot clerks to retrieve the ballot boxes to the rear of the hall where they will assemble to count the paper ballots. And as soon as they have a result, I will tell you what that is. Okay. Uh, please proceed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for the 140 additional thousand dollars, that will be spent out to the Library Building Maintenance Fund. And we do, as the Chair said, have a pretty long list of repairs that need to occur for that building. I'm happy to announce that starting next Tuesday, we will be repairing the library roof. That's using current fiscal year money and it's, it's been long overdue. We've been, you know, dealing with a lot of leaks. Our next kind of big project we're hoping to start once the fiscal year rolls over is to go ahead and repair the exterior of that building, which is going to be, you know, a significant cost. For anybody who walks around that building, maybe walks into the building, I would recommend to all of you, look up as you walk into the building because you're gonna see some holes in our exterior that are bigger than my head. And unfortunately, we are getting some significant water leaking into the building because of it. There's rot. We don't know just how bad it is. But again, you know, it's a common refrain with what I've been hearing tonight, kicking the can down the road. These things were first identified back in 2017 and, and nothing was really done about it. So we really need to get these, you know, long-term projects, you know, on, on the ground and running. So that, that's what those funds are for. In addition to the exterior, of course, we have other, you know, things that we need to do. The driveway and parking lot of the library is in need of, you know, repavement. Our, our cement blocks, you know, have, have started disingrating. So those are, those are some of our next, you know, five-year, you know, plans for those building maintenance funds.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? No, I, apparently she wants another comment.
Yes, and I appreciate the, I appreciate the clarification. It's nice to hear that.
For, for the record, for the record.
Yes, sir.
We will entertain the moving of the question when she has completed her comment, provided it doesn't require several more questions.
Nope. So again, thank you. It's important. We've got the large group of people here to understand what's actually being done for us with the library, so I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. This is all good information. All right. We are ready. There's an amendment proposed on the library. The only amendment that we had was of 10,000, which passed. So now we're voting on the total appropriation of Article 10, which as stated previously was 1,166,000. All those in favor? What?
Another hand.
So, thank you. Another hand. I don't see it, but I think Linda's got it. So, whoa, it's Mr. Robert Flowers. Yes, you wanna, you wanna?
I, I believe the motion to move the question is not a debatable item and the vote must be called.
You are right. Thank you for that one. Another parliamentarian in the crowd, I always welcome their comments. Okay.
Okay.
Whoops, whoops. We are gonna vote.
Wait, I had a different question on the conservation.
Um, the, no, no, we, okay. Whether or not we answer that question depends upon the vote that we're about to take to cut off debate. So.
Okay, so.
So just sit tight until we take this vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. All those in favor of cutting off debate on Article 10 signify by raising your blue cards. Yes. All those opposed? Debate ceases on Article 10. My apologies if you didn't get all your questions answered. We are now voting on the total appropriation on Article 10 of 1,166,000. All those in favor signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The eyes have it. The amended Article 10 passes. Now permit me to make a couple of comments regarding Article 11, 12, 13, and 14. It was pointed out to me by my astute neighbor that the language of these articles is not identical. One of the reasons is because one of them concerns a long-term lease and all of the articles in this warrant are reviewed by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration for their legal correctness and consistency. Sometimes the language that the town submits is altered slightly by DRA based on court cases and so on and so forth. And so what I'm suggesting to you is that the language in these articles, although it might appear materially different, has all been approved by DRA and we, and if they are not exactly the same, it's okay. It's because DRA has vetted them and approved them. And I would hesitate to amend them to run afoul of DRA's strict guidelines. We can amend the amount, but we can't really amend the language. Okay. Having said that, what is your pleasure on Article 11? Moved and seconded, we deal with Article 11 and the Chair recognizes Janet Kidder.
This article seeks the withdrawal of 132,303 from the fire vehicle replacement capital reserve fund. This is the fourth payment on the new engine number two that was delivered to the town in January 2024. If this appropriation is approved, the fund will have a balance of 275,812. We ask that you approve this article.
Thank you, Janet. Is there further discussion or comment? Sorry, lost my place. On this article? Seeing, seeing none? Ready for the question? All those, yeah, all those in favor of this article as printed in the warrant signify by saying, raising your cards. Great. All those opposed? The eyes have it. The article carries. Article 12, what's your pleasure? So moved and seconded. Chair recognizes BB Casey.
This article requests funds in the amount of 275,000 to purchase a new chassis for tanker one in the fire department using funds from the capital reserve fund for fire vehicles replacement. The fire department is replacing the chassis only and will use the existing tanker body as a way to save funds. If this appropriation is approved, the fund will have a balance of 812. We ask that you approve this article.
Further questions, comments, or discussion on Article 12? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All those in favor signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? The eyes have it. The article carries. Article 13, what's your pleasure? Moved and seconded. Chair calls on Bill Helm.
This article requests 350,000 for the purchase of fire breathing apparatus for the fire department. The planning for the replacement of this equipment has been done over several years as occurs with other fire department vehicle and equipment replacements such as the previous two articles. If this appropriation is approved, the fund will have a balance of 180. I ask that you approve this article.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, or discussion on Article 13? All ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 13? You know what to do. All those opposed? The eyes have it. The article carries. Article 14, what is your pleasure? Moved and seconded. Chair recognizes Janet Kidder.
The town's website is critically important to make information available to citizens who don't routinely go to the community bulletin board or town office bulletin boards to check for posted notices. The town website is in need of upgrades to make it easier to navigate and to ensure that it's ADA compliant, allowing all residents to access the important information posted there. Once this is completed, the town will be able to transit, transition to online form, which will allow submission of many documents online. We ask that you approve this article.
Further questions, comments, or discussion on Article 14? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 14? Raise your blue cards. All those opposed? Article 14 passes. The eyes have it. Article 15, what's your pleasure? Moved and seconded. Chair recognizes BB Casey.
This article will establish an expendable trust fund that will allow funds to accumulate from year to year, alleviating the need to include funds in the operating budget each year. When an employee separates employment from the town, which we don't want any of them to do, but occasionally they do, the unused accumulated leave time the employees have must be paid out to him or her. This fund will provide funds for that purpose. The initial payment of 10,000 will fund the trust fund. If there's no need for a payout in a fiscal year, the funds will stay in the fund. We ask that you approve this article.
Further questions or comments on Article 15? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The eyes have it. The article carries. Article 16, what is your pleasure? Moved and seconded, accept Article 16, consider Article 16. Chair recognizes Bill Helm.
I believe that Richard covered this earlier, but the library trustees are continuing their efforts to maintain the library and the current plans for the outside repairs for next year are 60,000 and that is what this article is for. We ask that you approve it.
Further questions or comments on Article 16 as explained? Seeing none? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 16? All those opposed? The eyes have it. The article carries. Article 17, what do you want to do with that? Move and seconded. Chair recognizes Janet.
Okay.
Just making sure I'm reading the right line.
You are, you are. Before I turn this article over to Charlene Baxter, one of the proponents of this project, I want to thank, for, thank the citizens that helped with the refurbishment and for stepping up to do the research needed to bring these markers back to life. They are a wonderful example of citizens taking positive action to make our town such a great place to live. Funding for this project will come from two trust funds that were established by the town in 1976 and 1981 for use for town purposes. Unlike trust funds that are created by others and offered to the town to be used for specific purposes, like the Mary Haddad Trust Fund and the Steve Mendelson Funds, for example, these trusts contain funds that were town funds set aside for future town purposes. I want to note the people who worked on this project, Doug and Charlene Baxter, Shelby and Woody Blunt, and Anne and Pierre Bedard. Charlene?
Yeah, Charlene, why don't you come in to the center? That's it. Tell us what this is all about.
Thank you. Thank you, Janet. We have dealt with some pretty complex issues tonight. I, I don't think this is going to be one of them. The evidence for why you should support this is in, well, it's not in front of you, it's in back of you because the markers are in the back. We were gonna move them to the front of the room. We're not going to because they're quite visible. Each year from 1963 to 1978, one marker was erected. These celebrated the town's history and led up to the bicentennial celebration in 1979. Some of you probably attended one or more of those dedications 50 or so years ago. They've been on display, proudly on display around town. They belong to you, the people who live here, and over time, they have become weathered and worn. Now, I was gonna make a sidebar comment at this point in my thoughts about some of us becoming weathered and worn, but I'm not gonna do that. In recent years, some folks started noticing that the markers were in really bad shape and felt that something ought to be done. In fact, one of the folks concerned about their condition, that was Woody Blunt, was present, was present at the dedication of actually the first marker that many visitors see when they drive up Main Street and that is the home of Moses Trussell. It's in the back. It was erected in 1975 and if you take a look at it, or you had a chance to look at it when you entered this room, you will see that that is actually fairly typical of the other 15 that have not been refurbished. The group of residents that Janet listed have sponsored the refurbishment of the old campus. You can also see the refurbished one. Its permanent home is in front of Whipple Memorial Town Hall. So our discussions with the select board resulted in them understanding there was a problem and also suggesting from them that certain of the trust funds, this is what you'll be voting on tonight, that were left to the town for exactly a purpose such as this, might be used to make the markers something we can be proud of again. These funds were entrusted to the town by people who loved New London, just as we do. As you vote on the article, we do want to acknowledge our amazing Department of Public Works led by Sam Clark. They are willing to remove and then reinstall the refurbished markers. And also thanks to Jim Perkins, the Town Archivist, and Kim Holquist, they've been very supportive. Wherever you live in New London, there is a historical marker near you. You'll find a link and a map on the town website under Archives. I ask you to support this article.
Thank you, Charlene. And just as a personal note, there's one of those on Old Main Street and when they put it in 60-odd years ago, they, the proponents of this thing for publicity purposes wanted to have my father come and lift me up and have me pull the canvas cover off of it in front of the cameras. Well, came and went, never happened. I got over not having the publicity, but I really support this project. I think it's great. So, anyway. Further comments or questions on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 17 as printed in the warrant signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? The eyes have it. Article 17 carries. Article 18, I do recall vaguely, in my poor brain, that I did receive an email from someone that wanted to be heard on this article besides, besides BB. So if you would just come to the microphone and anyone who wants to be heard on 18, please come to the center microphone and wait, then that will make my job a lot easier. The Chair recognizes BB Casey.
This petitioned warrant article addresses current state-level issues regarding public education funding. Although it's the last article of the evening, well, it may be one of the most crucial. The state has consistently reduced its spending on public education, shifting more responsibility to property taxpayers. Simultaneously, it has decreased accountability for taxpayer money allocated to education freedom accounts. By supporting Article 18, we're sending a message to the state demanding greater accountability for our tax dollars. I ask that you approve this article.
Thank you, BB. That article was moved and seconded. I heard it. Anyway, oh, okay. Further discussion on 18 in view of BB's comments? Yes, please?
Yes, it's Liz Steigman.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
Yes, I'm speaking in favor of this as well. Thank you, select person. There is some confusion by some people who've read this, asking if it's about doing away with freedom accounts and it is not at all. It's about really dealing with accountability and understanding where taxpayer dollars are going into the freedom account system. Originally, these accounts were set up for kids that went to public school that weren't doing well. And so they were being given an option to choose another school and get a certain amount of money, which they could take in, as a voucher and switch into another school system. There was a residency requirement and there was also an income level requirement. A recent audit by the Department of Education here in the state has found that, in the small audit that did, that 25% of the students that have used these vouchers have a residency problem or an income are not meeting the income requirements. I am representing 100 people that actually signed this petition, who went to the Cursage Meeting and realized that they wanted some, to take some action to get more clarity on what is happening with regard to vouchers. And so this is the origination of this warrant article. I hope you can support it. It's about asking the town and the select board to go to the state rather than just having individuals do it, but the town go represent. having individuals do it, but the town go represent us all and say, please give more clarity, accountability, and oversight to this system. So I encourage you all to vote yes on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Further questions or comments about the Article eighteen? Ready for the question? All those in favor, signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, let me just say this about that. We have, oop, what's this? The result? Oh, wow, cool, all right. Their timing is impeccable, my ballot clerks, they're great. Okay, so I wanted to point out, first of all, that we have 548 voters, had 548 voters cast their ballots on this Article III bond issue, and that means that the attendance at this particular meeting at that point was about twice what it is normally. And I really appreciate all those folks turning out and weighing in on the importance of this article, and I'm now prepared to tell you that the results of the bond vote on Article III was yes, 289, no, 259. Now, whoop, whoa. What is going on here? Forty-seven percent no, 53% yes. Great. The statute says it has to be three fifths to pass. So is 53% three fifths? It is not. So, the article passed by a simple majority, but the statutes of the state of New Hampshire require bond issues, as I stated in the beginning, to pass by a three-fifths majority, which this article failed to do. So Article III fails. Now that the result of Article III has been presented to the Assembly, the Chair can now entertain a motion, excuse me? Sorry, he wants that for his notes. We are now in the position to entertain a motion for restrictive reconsideration. And as I mentioned before we began this ordeal, restrictive reconsideration is a motion that prevents this bond vote from being cast a second time tonight. If you want to re, if you want to restrict the reconsideration, that means we vote to reconsider, this is really two votes, you're voting for restrictive reconsideration, and then you vote to reconsider. If you pass the restrictive reconsideration and you vote to reconsider, it can't be done until at least seven days from tonight. That gives us an opportunity to renotice all the voters so that everyone can come back and reconsider the thing. Restrictive reconsideration was done to prevent people from leaving the hall and having the opposition bring it back and overturn it after everybody's gone home. That's fundamentally unfair, it's the stay-at-home rule, part of it, the variation thereof. So at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for restrictive reconsideration on Article III. I see, so moved, do I have a second? Second. Are we clear on what it means to vote that way? Are we clear on what the motion for restrictive reconsideration means? One year, I tried, excuse me? Okay. I thought I had, but I'll try it again. You're absolutely right. Okay, tell you what we're going to do, I'm going to put this to you. There's another option, which is a lot easier. We deal with Article nineteen, and then we simply, well, we don't adjourn because adjourn is not defined. We, we, yeah, we close the meeting, we dissolve the meeting, is a legal term. So, we can do Article nineteen and then simply vote to dissolve, and that settles it, we don't have to restrict it. Article nine? Oh, God, Jesus, hey, where's my clerk, come on, dude. All right, so, tell you what we're going to do, we're going to, we're going to wait on this reconstrictive consideration thing, we're going to go back to Article nine. Now, there's a note, whoa, it's not, it's a note on your thing, great, so what we've got to do? Yeah? Which one? No, we don't, no, 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 I was explaining it, I said I'd entertain it. Chair withdraws his motion. There, that settles it, okay. Now, recall Article nine was our long-term debt article. I'm not perfect. Recall Article nine was our long-term debt article, and at the time we approached it, it is written, according to the law, as it should be, with the presumption that Article III would pass, so the debt service for Article III, had it passed, is included in these totals. Since Article III passed a simple majority but failed to achieve the three fifths required, it failed. So now, we must remove a certain amount from the appropriation on Article nine to account for the fact that the bond issue failed. So, the Chair will entertain a motion to amend Article IX's debt service, reducing it by $23,875 on interest.
Point of order?
Oh, yes, my parliamentarian.
It was tabled, I moved that we take it off the table so that you can entertain a motion to amend, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. You can have my job if you want, it'd make it a lot easier. When I retire, Bob, I'm going to have you to come to do this. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to remove, oh, no, we want to, we want to consider, but take it off the table, we want to put it back on the table. Chair will entertain a motion to put Article nine back on the table. Do we all understand why? Can I have a second? Do you understand why we want to take Article nine and put it back on the table? Under, another point of order, where? Well, get the microphone. No, wait, get the, come to the mic, Conrad. We have to hear for the record what we want.
You did not use the wording placing it on the table, you just...
Tabled it.
No, you didn't, you specifically used a different phrase.
You passed over it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Then, we simply entertain a motion to consider it. Thank you. Do we have a Chair, do we have a motion to consider Article nine, so we can amend it? Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of considering Article nine, signify, done. All those opposed? Great, we're going to reconsider Article nine. Chair will entertain an amendment. You want to read this? I can't, I can't amend this, somebody else got to amend it. It's not written, yeah, BB, you want to do that?
Point of order?
Yeah? What do you?
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Shoot.
As, I am not a parliamentarian, but as I understand the definition of to appropriate, it means that the money, you appropriate the money, but that doesn't actually mean you have to sign a check and spend it. And so, I question whether we need to make any change to Article nine at all, and just go to, to adjourn the meeting.
I think we do. You want to answer this? You want to answer this? You guys, do you want, I mean, it seems like we've got a lot of people here, no more than I do, so why don't we avail ourselves of them?
Okay, so, since Article III failed, we no longer need as much money in the interest line that we have in the budget. You can either leave the money in there, and it won't get spent, however, it would be available since it's in the budget, and it will be used to calculate the tax rate. If you, the best thing to do to keep the taxes as low as possible is to make a motion to remove it, because we don't need to spend it. So you can do either, leave it in or take it out. If you take it out, it won't be used when the tax rate gets set in the fall.
Does that explain the reason why we want to amend? Great. Ooh, Scott, yeah, please. Name? Am I talking it? Yeah, you're good. Okay. What happens if you amend tonight, then you reconsider Article III and it passes? Then how do we fund it, since we now don't have enough money for the debt service? Well, it may not happen, but I'm just asking. Okay. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know all the answers, I don't know the answer to that. It's a good question. Do you know the answer? If you, I mean, if they could reconsider nine again, right, but if we cut these corners and then we reconsider Article III, stop with Article III, reconsider Article III.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Here's the deal. If we vote to amend Article nine to reduce it by the interest amount on the bond that failed, and we pass the amended, reduced Article nine, and then we reconsider Article III seven days later, and it passes, then we simply amend Article nine to put the interest back in. Clear? All right. Sorry, Liz?
Point of clarification, will we have to reconsider Article nine as well and bring it back at the same time, or could we do it separately? Do we do two reconsiderations, one for three and one for nine, so that we bring them back together in seven days if there's an election, a vote, sorry?
Answer yes. Okay. So, are we ready to, we have, we have nine back on the table, yeah? Yeah, all right, we have nine back on the table, so, we are ready to entertain a motion to reduce it by the interest that we don't need for Article III, and the amount of that interest that's being reduced is? So it's $23,875. It's moved and seconded. We have had some discussion, do we need more, or are there further questions on this amendment to reduce the interest in Article nine by the amount so stated? All right, all those in favor of reducing the amount in Article nine signify by raising your cards, all those opposed? Ayes have it, the interest in Article nine has been reduced to account for the fact that the bond in Article III failed. Article nineteen, what is your pleasure?
You haven't taken up Article nine yet.
Oh, shit.
You've amended it.
Is it, what time is it? I, I've only been up 14 hours here, no wonder. Thank you, Bob, I don't know what I'd do without you. All right, Article nine? The new total for Article nine is what? Thank you, the new total, please make a note in your Bible, your hymnals here, the new interest amount as amended is 604,172. All those in favor of Article nine as amended to the amount of 604,172, and I see a house full of blue cards. Done. Now, we can go to Article nineteen. What's your pleasure? Moved and seconded. Do we have any agents, auditors, or committees to hear reports from? Seeing none? Well, we voted to do it, there just doesn't happen to be any committees. All those in favor, yeah? Bingo, okay, all those opposed, all right, so we're hearing the reports of committees, nobody's come forward? Uh-oh. Are you the Chair of a committee that wishes to report, or?
No, I want, point of order, may I make a motion to adjourn, or whatever language you want to use to close the meeting?
Why don't you just go do that?
I make a motion to adjourn, or whatever language you use to close the meeting.
Done. All those in, second? Discussion? Whoa, wait, wait a minute. If we adjourn, we do not need, if the dissolution motion, as Brother Bowers has proposed, passes, we do not need to do reconsideration, or restrictive reconsideration, it's a shortcut.
The point is, it's a non-debatable motion at this point, so we just vote on it.
Done. Or are we going to have multiple points of order? Get to the microphone and ask the question, please.
Mary Ann Barton, New London resident, just for the group to understand, if we vote to close the meeting, then we cannot vote to reconsider?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have to turn down the vote to close the meeting if anyone wants to vote to reconsider on Article III, is that correct?
That's what I, that's how I see it.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Thank you.
Hi.
Who's that? Did I hear that someone?
Hi, hi.
Yes, thank you, who do you have?
Hi, Yula Cosma, New London resident.
Thank you.
I was interested in having more discussion on the reconsideration issue, I just didn't get a chance to get to the mic yet.
Thank you. You just heard it. All those in favor of dissolution, adjournment, whatever, show your cards. All those opposed? Chairs in doubt? Ballot clerks? Assume your stations.
I will. People are ready. Are you ready? Are the ballot clerks ready? Don't be sad, the ballot clerk's ready.
Are the ballot clerks ready to proceed with the count? We need one for each section? You got this section down here? I don't hear anybody, let's. All right, we're ready.
I can request that you clarify.
We don't, we're not gonna, we have.
You can clarify to the room what the consequence of how they vote right now is as it has bearings on Article Three.
If we pass this. It's not debate, Peter, it's explaining what we're voting on. That's not debating whether I should or shouldn't vote that way. It's explaining what the voters are voting on. That's how I see it. If you, we are about to hold our cards aloft on a motion to dissolve the business meeting. That's what we're voting on. If we dissolve the business meeting, we're done. We put the chairs up, we leave. If we do not dissolve the business meeting, it's still open. Whatever happens, and I can't say what that will be. So if you want to close the meeting, you know how to vote. And if you're ready to vote, we will proceed. The ballot clerks are ready to count. Another point of order. This is great, the more people come in, the more power vegetarians we have, and the more interesting it gets.
So I'm Mike Quinn, I'm old resident of New London. I just want to be clear, once we close the meeting, there is no reconsideration.
Bingo.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, closing the meeting, signify by holding your blue cards aloft, and do so until directed to lower them. Allow our ballot clerks the opportunity to count the ballots, the cards rather. Conrad, you need to recount this section. Please. And you're. I can't, I can't, I can ask for a motion for restrictive reconsideration. We had, yeah, you guys. That's right. And I see all the thumbs up, then I'm going to know that we're done. Do we have all thumbs up? It would appear that we do. Please lower your cards. And all those opposed to dissolving the meeting, well, please hold those cards aloft. It's fundamentally unfair not to do restrictive reconsideration. So I'm going to try to get somebody to put it on the floor. And move out, and we'll see. Huh? No, they won't, they won't, they want to. I know it's not fair. All right, we're done. Thank you. Now give the ballot clerks a minute or two to tabulate the result. We will stand and recess for a few moments until that happens. I don't think it is. Where's your handbook? Restricting reconsideration only after vote is taken, that's 40/10. Do you have that here?
I don't follow that, but wait.
All right, we're done. Thank you. Now give the ballot clerks a minute or two to tabulate the result. We will stand and recess for a few moments until that happens. I don't think it is. Where's your handbook? Restressing reconsideration only after vote is taken, that's 40/10. Do you have that here?
I don't think it is.
It doesn't have it on here, it's what it's supposed to be. It's not. It's right. Restricting reconsideration only after vote is taken, that's 40/10. Do you have a number?
Yeah, there's no court, people come and go, I mean, it's whatever's here.
It's the most challenging town meeting I've ever done. Unfortunately, it won't be the last time. This won't be the last time. Unfortunately, we got one more.
I could do something. I could be silent.
No, he's good, I don't mind these guys. I don't mind these guys. Peter, Peter, Stan, I don't mind those guys, what the hell?
It's impossible, about 60 percent, and then they, the population, they're definitely agreeing.
Definitely agreeing. So we know we've got majority, and we have last 10 percent. I don't think we're going to get $5 million to refurbish the place.
It's not 2/3, it's not 66 percent.
66.
Thank you, I was thinking 3/5.
I was going to say 3/5.
Where's the citation?
Where's the citation?
Where's the citation?
I dress.
If we don't get that motion to restrict reconsideration, that's really good.
I don't want to talk to me.
Somebody's got something.
They've got to get 60 percent.
How do you know what the bail is like?
It doesn't say that in the law.
Doesn't say that in the law, how do you know what's, yeah.
How do I know?
In fact, you know what's bail is like.
Doesn't the motion?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Take your seats, let's go, please. On the motion to dissolve, yes, 109. No, 117. We are in session. So what do you want to do? I see.
Sir?
Yeah, microphone, I have to take the person, woman at the mic first, please, yeah.
I would like to move that we restrict reconsideration.
On what?
On Article Nineteen, on Article Three, thank you.
Do we have a second? It's moved and seconded that we restrict reconsideration on Article Three.
So my understanding is that means that we do not reconsider tonight, that the town has to have another meeting in seven days?
Okay.
And that, and there'll be an announcement for everyone to come back for a vote?
That is partly correct.
Clarification, please.
Partly correct. Let me, let me try to explain this. If we pass the motion to restrict reconsideration, and then two minutes later, somebody says, "I move to reconsider Article Three," and it's seconded, and it's discussed, and the reconsideration motion passes, great, we'll reconsider it seven days later. If we pass the motion to reconsideration, to restrict reconsideration, and simply dissolve, no big deal. You've got to have the motion to restrict reconsideration passed, followed by the motion to reconsider passed, and then we'll reconsider it seven days later. Renote the meeting. Reamend Article Nine if it passes to include the interest we took out just a moment ago. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Are there further questions? I see there's two folks standing behind you.
I was going to make a similar motion.
Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor to restrict reconsideration of Article Three, and it's been seconded. Is there further question or comment? Come to the center of the floor, please. Identify yourself and be heard.
Don Monticello. It's no sooner than seven days. It's not seven days, is that correct?
That's no sooner than seven days. We have at least seven days. We have to, we have to schedule, I mean, we have to schedule the meeting, we've got to find a venue, we've got to rent chairs. Yeah, right.
And how is that done? How was it decided?
It'll be decided by the selectmen and noticed, all the taxpayers will be noticed of the meeting. They say, I presume, that the reason the legislator said seven days, legislation said seven days, was so that the notice could be made in weekly publications. We now have the internet, so the notice could be almost immediate. But I suspect that's the reason the legislature settled on seven days. Further question?
If we restrict, Mary Ann Barton, New London, if we restrict consideration to Article Three, does that mean that we can't reconsider the budget that's related to Article Three? If we want, because we took away the interest payments, so if it passes, when it's reconsidered, don't we need to consider both?
Then I said we, then I said we would amend, reconsider or amend Article Nine to put the interest back in. It's intuitively understood that that would have to happen.
Okay.
They're connected.
Okay. So we, on the floor tonight, all we have to do is reconsider Article Three.
Three, correct. Thank you.
Patricia Goodland, New London, I just want to be clear in my mind, that if we are in favor of having an opportunity within seven days to vote again on Article Three, yes or no, would you please outline for me, and maybe some of the rest of us, how these various votes will then lead to that opportunity to again address Article Three in, within seven days?
Well, well, up to, after seven days, but yes.
After seven days.
In the future, shall we say. You would vote in the affirmative on the motion to restrict reconsideration of Article Three. Once that vote has been made and tabulated and recorded in the affirmative, a second motion would be made to reconsider Article Three.
In the, within the seven days?
No.
No?
Just reconsider it. If the majority prevails, and it's decided that that Article Three is to be reconsidered, it will be reconsidered in a public meeting duly noticed, but not before seven days. It would be in the future sometime, so those two things got to happen.
Thank you.
You got to pass the motion to restrict reconsideration, and then you have to pass the motion to reconsider.
Thank you. That helps.
Are we all clear? I need to, the answer is, yeah, it is, if I heard your question correctly, it is, is the motion to restrict reconsideration a simple majority? Answer yes. Is the motion to reconsider a simple majority? The answer is yes. That's correct. Simple majority. We have a motion on the floor, we are discussing the motion to restrict reconsideration on Article Three.
Carolyn Reno, New London resident.
Hi, Carolyn.
Point of, hi. Point of clarification, so if we were to vote to restrict reconsideration, that doesn't mean that our topic is done?
No. It just means if we pass the motion to restrict reconsideration, and we pass the subsequent motion to reconsider it, that reconsideration can't happen for at least seven days.
I'm not asking about the seven days. So... Okay, so we, on the floor tonight, all we have to do is reconsider Article three?
Three, correct. Thank you.
Patricia Goodland, New London, I just want to be clear in my mind that if we are in favor of having an opportunity within seven days to vote again on Article three, yes or no, would you please outline for me, and maybe some of the rest of us, how these various votes will then lead to that opportunity to again address Article three in, within seven days?
Well, well, up to, after seven days, but yes.
After seven days.
In the future, shall we say? You would vote in the affirmative on the motion to restrict reconsideration of Article three. Once that vote has been made and tabulated and recorded in the affirmative, a second motion would be made to reconsider Article three.
In the, within the seven days?
No. Just reconsider it. If the majority prevails, and it's decided that that Article three is to be reconsidered, it will be reconsidered in a public meeting duly noticed, but not before seven days. It would be in the future sometime, so those two things got to happen. You've got to pass the motion to restrict reconsideration, and then you have to pass the motion to reconsider.
Thank you, that helps.
Are we all clear? I need to... The answer is, yeah, it is. If I heard your question correctly, it is, is the motion to restrict reconsideration a simple majority? Answer, yes. Is the motion to reconsider a simple majority? The answer is yes. That's correct. Simple majority. We have a motion on the floor. We are discussing the motion to restrict reconsideration on Article three.
Carolyn Reno, New London resident.
Hi, Carolyn.
Point of, hi. Point of clarification? So if we were to vote to restrict reconsideration, that doesn't mean that our topic is done?
No. It just means if we pass the motion to restrict reconsideration, and we pass the subsequent motion to reconsider it, that reconsideration can't happen for at least seven days.
I'm not asking about the seven days. So there'd be two votes?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the restriction passing doesn't mean that the whole topic is done.
No, it's not.
Thanks.
Joe Kibbit, New London. Michael, what happens if the vote you're taking now fails? What's the steps after that? If the vote fails, what happens?
Which vote? To restrict fails? Then we, then we wait for the next motion. Whatever that may be. And I just told you what the two motions would likely be.
Philip Sherman, you've walked through the process for the people who want to reconsider this thing sometime in the future. Would you please walk through the process for the people who do not want to reconsider this thing? There are several of us that just don't understand what you're talking about.
Understood, understood.
Thank you.
Well, I, Peter, I try. I do my best. If you don't want to reconsider Article three, then you have to vote no on the motion to reconsider Article three. Period. If, has it, the motion, whether or not you want to reconsider Article three is independent of the motion to restrict reconsideration on Article three. All the motion to restrict reconsideration is doing is moving the reconsideration date into the future so that everyone can be properly noticed, and everyone can return to the hall, and everybody that wants to vote can vote. It is fundamental fairness in action, set up by the legislature. But whether or not we ever invoke the provisions of restrictive reconsideration depends upon whether you vote in the affirmative to reconsider it. That's the second vote. Does that help?
Sir, sir, Christine Clink, once more. I've made the motion.
You have.
To restrict reconsideration.
And it's been seconded, and we're discussing it.
With the intention simply to say, I don't want to vote for consideration. I want at least the opportunity, if the next vote is to do reconsideration, that we must wait. So please, if you either don't want reconsideration, or you want them to at least have to do do notice and give another week for, or more, to do a fair meeting, or everybody to come back, please vote to restrict reconsideration so we can be done tonight, one way or the other. Thank you.
I get it. Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
I'm not, I'm not trying to rush it, I just, it's all about fairness. You've stated it very well, thank you.
Thank you, I'm trying.
Yeah, good evening. Running the, this Dorothy Hitchmoss, New London. Running the risk of speaking plainly, and with respect to common sense, and with respect to all the people who were not able to stay. The reality is that the town has not voted by a three-fifths majority to pass Article three. Now, we can ask for people to come back and reconsider this, but the reality is that what happened tonight with an amazing and wonderful showing of people in the town is that Article three, whether we like it or not, whether you voted yes or no, did not pass by a three-fifths majority. And I would ask the remaining crowd here to consider that, and also consider that may not pass again by a three-fifths majority. Thank you.
Okay, are we through with discussing? Oh, I see a young man with his hand raised, and he's approaching the microphone.
I wasn't born in America, but I've learned that a democracy is a spectator sport. If you want democracy, you've got to stick around, and you have to participate. Thank you.
I need your name.
Tony Thompson. I live on Main Street, and I've been here over five years.
Thank you, Tony.
And I have been to other town meetings in other towns.
Thank you, Tony. I'm tickled to know that, and I appreciate your comment.
Bob Bowers, I have another point of order.
Oh, good. Bob, if we can't have fun doing this, it's not worth doing. So please tell me what you're going.
I've spoken with you in the past upon this, and that is that the rules that apply to motions to reconsider are that the only person who can make a motion to do so has to have voted on the prevailing side. In this particular circumstance, that means that the person making a motion to reconsider has to have voted no on Article three. Now, I understand that some people can put a straw man out that votes no, even though they want to vote yes, so that they can be in that position to then vote to reconsider. The problem I'm having is that we've talked about fundamental fairness, and the whole point of this law passed by the entire state is to be fair to people, to allow people to have their voices heard, to have an open discussion, and to move forward. If we pass the motion to limit reconsideration, we at least set the standard that if there's a subsequent motion, it won't be heard until later, which would be the only fair way to do it. In fact, if the people who are moving to reconsider are in fact not in favor of the vote, it means that they are trying to avoid fairness, fundamental fairness, as you put it. They are trying to work something through in order to avoid a vote of this body with 600 people voting. I say vote for the motion to restrict reconsideration. I say if somebody makes a motion to reconsider after that, you demand a sworn proof that they voted against it, and I would ask everybody, even if you're in favor of it, vote against it. That is so unfair, I can't believe it.
Thank you. John Tilly?
I just wanted to, this is sort of following up on Dorothy's, but with numbers. 538 people voted. It has to pass by three-fifths. That would be 323, which means that if the same number of people showed up, this is, so if you're thinking about this, this is what, this is what would have to happen. So if the exact same number of people showed up to vote, 34 people would have to change their minds. And if you, if you wanted to bring people back together, as Bob was saying, it would require probably about, I don't know, 12 or 15 more people because it would become a larger group. So you would end up with, I don't know, 45, 50 people. We didn't do that calculus. We did not make that calculation, but you're talking about a lot of people to bring back together, to swing that by three-fifths, assuming the same size. That's all.
Thank you, John. Are we ready for the question on the motion to restrict reconsideration of Article three? I'm not seeing anyone coming to the microphone. I'm not seeing any hands in the air. I'm going to assume that you're ready. So I'm going to ask those who are in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article three to so signify by raising their blue cards. I, thank you. All those opposed? Clearly, the ayes have it. The motion to restrict reconsideration on Article three passes.
I make a motion to close the proceedings.
We have, seconded? Moved and seconded to dissolve this meeting. Not debatable. Thank you, Peter. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting signify by holding your blue cards aloft. All those? We're in the middle of a vote. All those opposed? The chair is in doubt, and I'm hearing some talk up in the back, and I don't know why. Please make your point. Are you asking a point of order?
I think there's many people in this room that want this Amendment three to be reconsidered after this meeting, within seven days' time, but.
No motion was made to actually reconsider the article. The motion to dissolve the meeting was made. It takes priority. If there's enough people in the room that really want to have this reconsidered, you have to vote once again to continue the meeting. Then make your motion to reconsider Article three. We put it to a vote. If it prevails, it will be reconsidered, not sooner than seven days. If it fails, the chair will entertain a third motion to dissolve. Is that clear? Does that answer your question about where we are?
Yes, so if we vote to close the meeting, there is no reconsideration in seven days.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, now, we're going to take that vote again, and I need the assistance of my ballot clerks because the chair was in doubt as to the motion to dissolve this meeting. Please indicate when the ballot clerks are prepared to take the count. Please tell me they didn't all go home. Okay, young man, who you are counting this, you're counting up here is in addition to your, thank you. Are the ballot clerks all ready? No. Conrad, Conrad counted this section before, so, yeah. Are the ballot clerks ready? Um, everybody okay? See, one more down here. Okay. Everyone who is in favor of dissolving this meeting and going home, signify by raising your blue cards. And hold them aloft, please, until my ballot clerks have counted all the sections. Have all the ballot clerks completed their counts? Not hearing any no's? Okay, all those opposed to dissolving the meeting signify by raising your blue cards and hold them aloft, please. Have the ballot clerks completed the count? Okay. The ballot clerks may retire to tabulate the results, which will be returned to the stage by the town clerk. And pending the outcome of this vote, we will either go home, or we will stay for what the future brings. This is democracy at the grassroots level. And you've all been very patient, and I thank you for that.
Cora Leone, what can I do for you?
I agree, I agree. I, I, I agree. I'm not buying that. I'm not, I'm not buying that argument. Let them vote, it's their meeting, I don't care. Mate, but.
It's not a law.
It's not a law. This is a law.
Please resume your seats. We are ready to proceed. I see people standing at the microphone, and I haven't even announced the result. On the motion to dissolve this town meeting. Yes, 99? No, 107? We are in session.
I would like to make a motion.
What do you want to do?
To reconsider Article three.
We have a motion on the floor to reconsider Article three. Is there?
And seconded.
And it's been seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
About what this means?
I think you should clarify, and I don't think this process was terribly transparent because we were told that we needed to restrict reconsideration, and then we had to reconsider it. And I think there's a lot of confused people here, and a lot of quick people to come to the mic, and I don't feel like the gentleman in the back who was saying, "We really need to respect democracy here", but then it wasn't exactly transparent to all the members in the community who aren't as familiar with Robert's Rules, et cetera.
Robert's Rules is not controlling in this meeting. What is controlling in this meeting are the statutes of the state of New Hampshire, the rules that you adopted at the beginning of this meeting that are published in the Town Report, and other rules that this moderator has. Now, let me just say this about that. It's your meeting. You, by a simple majority, can overrule any decision that I make. But I would caution you overruling a rule that is consistent with the statute. Do you, are you clear where I'm coming from? I'm saying I'm not the supreme being. I can be overruled by you, the people. It's your meeting. I just do the best I can. But Robert's Rules is not the governing document here.
Okay, well, I do say that I tried to go to the town meeting to get an annual report last. last week, and they weren't available, and then I went to vote, and they weren't also not available, and then I came to the town meeting, and they were not available again. So if the rules to govern this meeting were made available, they certainly weren't made available to me when I tried to get them three or four times.
They're on the website.
Okay.
The entire Town Report is on the website in PDF.
Which needs to be upgraded, but that's one thing.
It's on the website in PDF. I appreciate your searches. I'm sorry you didn't get a Town Report. I'm doing the best I can to make this as clear as I can.
Okay, so...
I apologize for my shortcomings.
I would like to restate that I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
It's done. We're good.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. I see there's a gentleman behind you. Would you care to speak on this discussion?
Yes, my name is Juan Garcia. I'm a resident of London. I just want to say, I am willing to convert on my vote to end the meeting and end the meeting if we vote to reconsider. So I would like to vote to reconsider the police station, and if we do that, whether we win or not, I definitely will convert over from ending the meeting, from not ending the meeting to ending the meeting.
No deals. It's up to the people. You can do what you want, but it's up to the pop. It's up to the voters whether we leave or not. You can stay here all night, that's fine.
I want to raise my point of order. It's a young lady pointed to the statute regarding motions to restrict reconsideration and felt that it said that you did not have to vote on the prevailing side to make a motion to reconsider. That is a... The statute has nothing to do with that. It's a parliamentary proceeding that has been honored in all sessions that I have ever been at and seen, and there's been a lot that if you are going to make a motion to reconsider, you have to have voted on the side that won. Now, you have not stated that you're going to follow good, correct parliamentary procedures, and I suppose you can rule on that, but the general procedure in parliamentary proceedings is you have to prove that you have voted on the prevailing side. If you decide as a moderator that that does not apply, then fine. Otherwise, you need to ask the person if they did in fact vote against Article Three.
I'll ask him if you want.
Thank you.
Noted. Will the proponent of the motion to reconsider approach the microphone? You heard the parliamentarians question?
I think that maybe we need to look up the statute. I don't understand. I guess I just don't understand why the way that someone votes would change the... This bodies want to make a motion to reconsider. Why should the noes have more of a right to reconsider it than the yeses if ultimately it lost? So the...
Robert's...
By voting yes, it's still lost.
Roberts thought that, but like I said before, moderators in the state of New Hampshire are not bound strictly to Robert's Rules of Order. And I quite frankly, on a secret ballot, don't think it's anybody's business who voted how. That's why we had a secret ballot in the first place. So I'm going to let you make your motion, and I'm going to let the populace vote on it.
Thank you.
And we'll go from there. Okay. Further comment or discussion? Or points of order, as the case may be? The question has been called. Pardon? Richard, what are you going to do, dude? It's on.
Did somebody else have a question, or else I'll ask?
We move on.
So I'm trying to... I thought you had very clearly explained...
I thought I did.
That it would be incredibly unfair that people left after the vote, and that if somehow people who stayed could vote and reverse things, that that would be incredibly unfair and somehow is not allowed.
That's not happening. That's not happening.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
The motion to restrict reconsideration passed. So if you now want to reconsider it, great. We just have to wait at least seven days.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we are.
Thank you.
We have a motion to reconsider Article Three on the floor. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of reconsidering Article Three signify by holding your blue cards aloft. All those opposed? Let's see. We're going to ask... Okay, wait a minute. We're going to ask for the yeses again, please. All those in favor? All those opposed? Well, the chair... The chair's in doubt, but barely, so to dissuade the naysayers, I'm going to summon the ballot clerks, and we're going to take account by section. All the misinformation floating around, the last thing I want is to make a judgment call and have it be wrong and splashed all over social media like I give a shit. Ballot clerks, let me know when you're ready to count the sections, and we will proceed. You're going to count the table. Yeah, thank you. Okay, you got ballot clerks ready? What are we doing? We got... All the ballot clerks ready to count?
Yeah.
Great. All those who are in favor of this reconsideration of Article Three signify by holding your blue cards aloft, and please hold them there for a few moments. Are all the ballot clerks ready? Have they completed their counts? Everyone completed their counts? Okay, all those opposed? Ballot clerks completed? You may tabulate. People may put their cards down. And we'll take a short recess while they're tabulating the result. So if this passes, we now need to do a reconsideration of Article Nine. So, which we'll do, and I'll just do it. Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I'm not that patient, General.
You're doing good.
I have a tremendous amount of respect for Bob Hours. I always have. And I just, I just not getting there.
The winning side doesn't like this, and that's...
I know that, I know. Look. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats so we can report the result of the vote. On the motion to reconsider Article Three, the following result: yes, 120? No, 83? We are reconsidering Article Three. Now... Now that that vote is known, the chair will entertain a motion to reconsider Article Nine, which is connected to Article Three by virtue of the interest computation. Moved and seconded. Are we clear on why we need to do this? Discussion questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor of reconsidering Article Nine signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Nine will also be reconsidered at a meeting to be noticed sometime in the future. I'm saying it's going to be at least...
Point of order?
Yes.
Article Nine, you did not have a motion to restrict reconsideration, so the vote you just passed passes it. You now have the original Article Nine that has been passed, and that's fine, but I understand it doesn't come up later. It's done.
Well, it doesn't... No, 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 no. Whoa, 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 whoa. No, no, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Was there a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article Nine? Was there?
Then, yeah, then if we reconsider Article... Yeah, then we got to do it now. Well...
Well, you've already made a motion to reconsider it. So it would be moved. You're now considering Article Nine.
Chair can...
You've already done it. It won't come up. It won't come up seven days later. It's now.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to reconsider... Article Nine. No, I want to reconsider what we just did. Right? We go back to where we were. Aha, it's just the same way we did.
Yeah, yeah.
What do I do with this motion that's on the floor?
So this, if we pass, if we pass this motion that we, Bob, as so astutely pointed out, is on the floor, it's not going to matter one way or the other. Here's what we need to do. We need to pass a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article Nine, since Article Nine has already been passed. It's been moved and seconded, that we restrict reconsideration of Article Nine. Now, if you pass this, both Article Three and Article Nine will be on the agenda at this new meeting. And if Article Three passes by three fifths, we can adjust the interest on Article Nine. Presently, Article Nine, the interest has been reduced because the bond failed at the first vote. So if we just leave Article Nine as it is, we're fine. So, at this point, I'm going to ask all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article Nine to raise your blue cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it? We will now reconsider... We will now... Now, now that we've restricted the reconsideration on Article Nine, we have to vote to reconsider Article Nine. So, that motion has been made. Yes? Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Is it clear why we need to reconsider it? Great. All those in favor of reconsidering Article Nine? All those opposed? Article Nine will be reconsidered, along with Article Three, at a meeting sometime in the future, at least seven days in the future. You will all be noticed for said meeting, and we will probably return to this venue to conduct it. And we'll have to set the hall up. We've got to schedule it. We've got to find out when the hall's available, plan it all ahead, and notice all of you. Now, we have a motion to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor signify by raising your blue cards. All those opposed? Thank you. I didn't realize we all love town meeting quite so much. It would be greatly appreciated if we had some volunteers to stay and help us stack these chairs. Thank you.